We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at six thirty-two. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence and observance about military past and present.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution and to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andy, will you assist us with roll call, please, proceeding?
I'm hangin'.
Here.
Hi, McTack.
Here.
Brenner.
Here.
Rick Gunnell's.
Here.
Here.
DC Wells.
Six years.
Well, Stanky.
Here.
Um, as president this evening, I see Greg, our holding officer, who will always be active. Excuse me, we're also here, Sergeant, at Arms this evening. Um, we have Tammy Batterby, our office assistant, is also present this evening. Um, not staff, but Marty Fuzanol, thanks for joining us, county commissioner. The approval of minutes from the March fourth, twenty twenty five. Our motion.
Make the motion to approve March fourth. Order.
Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? All in favor of the approval of the meeting, March fourth, minutes twenty twenty five, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carried six zero. BOT special meeting, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Special meeting that we had.
Oh, the one that just went by.
Make a motion to approve the March nineteenth minutes, excuse me, twenty twenty five. For there any discussion?
That wasn't at that.
No.
All in favor for the meeting, special meeting, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carried. You would just say, I'm staying. You want to stay.
I'm staying.
Say motion carried by one. BOT special meeting, April tenth, twenty twenty five.
Moved.
Or.
Or.
Any discussion regarding the minutes?
That was the one that we just canceled the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor of the approval of the April tenth, twenty twenty five, special meeting, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carried six zero. Okay, we'll move on to additions to the agenda this evening.
I would like to add, uh, police department to the agenda.
Any other additions? On motion, yeah. You want, okay, that's fine. All in favor for the additions to the agenda, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose, say nay. Nay. Motion carried or two.
Where you gonna put that in, Madam Chair?
We're gonna move the additions to the agenda down to oh. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to public comments, please, agenda items only for three minutes.
Good evening, I'd like to address the board and remind them that we had a survey back in the fall, first summer, last summer. And during that survey, the survey participants were specifically asked about quality of marijuana, quantity of marijuana facilities growers and, uh, processing facilities within separate township. Roughly fifty-two percent of the survey participants felt there were too many marijuana growers and processing facilities within the township. Uh, just over twenty-five respondents had no opinion, while seventeen percent felt the quality was just right. Only four percent felt there were not enough. Uh, I would also like to remind you that we swore on that board voted to pass the ordinance. Therefore, as a resident, I would expect you to uphold the ordinance. Secondly, um, within that survey also separate town, uh, way proponents were, uh, when participants were, um, prompted about establishment of a separate township police department overwhelmingly fifty-eight percent of respondents expressed strong support. Thirteen percent expressed slight support and twenty-one percent did not support her. So that gives you seventy-one percent of the participants during the survey said that they were in favor of a separate township police department. Uh, I would remind you that you were all part of that survey. And you are to represent the people, and if that's what the people have said that should be followed through, but um, during that survey, it was also, uh, asked how important these potential land use development strategies were. Uh, preserving nature features was eighty-seven percent high for my importance. So we need to remember we are agricultural for the most part. They also said they encourage containment or decrease of industrial areas at seventy-three percent of the participants. They also stated improvement in expand community services and infrastructure at sixty-eight percent. With the townships least favorable or failing aspect first, limited or poor quality of emergency services, twenty-four percent. Limited or poor quality public services, twenty percent. That means that there's no police out here. I know of two incidences where we need an ambulance and they weren't here and there were no police here to help support them within forty-five minutes. Please remember, we've asked you to preserve our agricultural importance. That is my three minutes.
Really, I do have one question. That survey went out, I know that was in regards to our master plan. Can you tell us how many people participated in that survey, please?
Two hundred and seventy-one.
And do you know what our total population is in that township?
Probably five thousand, however, if not all people have access to the internet, or we're aware that there was a survey. And it did not go to each individual household for each resident to have the say in the, in the survey. So those that did participate were two hundred and seventy-one.
Thank you. Was there any other comment?
Uh, thank you, uh, point, point one, two, one, nine, nine, North Elsie Road. Uh, there are a couple of items on the agenda I just wanted to, uh, you know, comment on, and that would be, uh, K, L, separate township zoning ordinance review and revise, waived trim. Uh, many of you have worked with this ordinance over the years. Uh, I know Eric, you have, and John, uh, it really needs to be updated and, and, and put, put all together. And after this master plan was done, this would be an excellent time to do that. I know supervisor, you mentioned it, and I wholeheartedly support that. I think it's really needed, it's a good time to do it. We have a consultant that is familiar with our township. And I would ask you to really, you know, discuss this and, and, and move forward with this, or really seriously consider that. And then it goes down, down to K, uh, or L, uh, it says, uh, subcommittee. I, I certainly would be, uh, willing to help with that, i- i- if, if you're so inclined, so. Anyways, I was really glad to see that on your agenda and, uh, please do pursue it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Uh, many of you don't know me, I'm Tom Russ, I'm Paul Beisler, Sunning Law. Sixty-eighty-two Lake Road. Last year I came up here, um, came up to Michigan because my mother-in-law passed away, uh, his wife. I'm his caretaker now, and I live with him since last January. He's been living in the area for fifty years. Uh, what it is is we were talking about things and, uh, he had a problem with, uh, two weeks ago, um, he had a TIA, if you don't know what that is, that's like a stroke, mini-stroke. What happened was, we called, um, nine-one-one and it took forty-five minutes to somebody to show up. So then I started asking people and I was like, hey, do we have emergency services with the, uh, firefighters? They're not EMTs, well, I guess they're on call here and there. And we don't have any emergency services. And if you take a poll, I think with your elections, I think the majority of people that are in everywhere with that's for is over fifty probably. So it was a kind of a big deal. So I'm not talking about marijuana here, nothing to do with marijuana, it's all about life and death now. So if you have to call somebody within forty-five minutes, it takes, if you don't know, I'm prior military, twenty-two years I've, I've retired to come up here and quit my job to move in with him as a caretaker, to do all this stuff with him. And it took forty-five minutes, and if you've never performed CPR on people, which I have thirty minutes, twenty minutes is a long, long time to perform CPR on somebody before someone's there. So there's no police, there's no medical, there's no ambulants, fire department shows up or anything. So I'm asking the board to look at something, whether it be somehow to get more emergency services when you call nine-one-one, because I don't know where it goes. It was an MMR ambulance that showed up.
I was gonna ask you, that was my.
It was MMR ambulance that showed up, no police, no, uh, fire department, no nothing, so. Since his wife died in January last year, he had to get across the field to get to uh, Ms. Mary's house to call somebody for nine-one-one. And she died on the scene because nobody could form CPR quickly. Nobody showed up there until an hour later when she died. So she died right in front, in front of her husband. And he couldn't do nothing because he's ninety years old.
Uh, I'm the neighbor and I went over there and I called at least three times and they tell me, what did you do, CPR? I said, I can't touch her, I didn't know how to do that, you know? And I waited and we waited and waited and it
She passed away. Because we're gonna get nobody there to revive her in time. And a ninety-year-old man, he's not gonna be able to perform CPR, because it takes twenty minutes, thirty minutes is a long time doing CPR individual and trying to do everything else to get somebody there. So if the board can look at something, possibly for, that for township people, as you know, they're over fifty, at least fifty and older. It's, it's a life and death situation, uh, and that's something serious to think about.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, they come up.
I'm moving my way up here. In response to, uh, prior gentleman, so concerns about the nine-one-one, as county commissioner, uh, we're aware of, uh, that's a big problem throughout the county, especially in, uh, rural areas like Bedford Township, uh. We've been working, I, uh, had a, uh, took me a long time, a full year just to get the board to, uh, hire some, uh, experts, consultants through, uh, universities here out throughout the state to, uh, study the problem that we have with nine-one-one and in particular the ambulance, uh, response times. Uh, I know they're terrible out here and, uh, uh, in other areas, it's a little bit better, but, uh, this area in particular is bad, so. Anyway, that study's been going on for about a year and a half. It's supposed to be, I've been privileged to see some of it, uh, early, uh, but next month it'll be released to the public and, uh, there will be suggestions on how to change some of it to make it better for, uh, the whole county as a whole, but in particular, you know, I'm fighting for, said for township, but I have three other townships in my district too. And the response is different for each one, but, uh, uh, in response, I need to put on the agenda, the police, I don't know what you're gonna talk about, but, uh, uh, there really isn't any help here in Bedford Township, uh, some people think the, uh, the county sheriff is responsible or the paramedics, the paramedics, uh, they don't have any uh, responsibility or capability of transporting, they can respond and help, but they're not qualified to transfer the people to the hospital. And so you're dependent on, I don't know, who, what ambulance company out here responds to yours. Uh, I don't think you have anything local, comes out of the Clive area or Davidson area or God knows where, uh, but, uh, it's serious issues and, uh, you need to take as a board, uh, take a close look at what you can do here locally too. Uh, I'm fighting hard for you at the county level to try to do that, and as that evolves, I'll come in and update you a little bit more.
I appreciate that, Marty, thank you.
Chair, I don't want to take too much time because we have a long agenda, but this subject came up with the fire department and, uh, MMR was, uh, who they were, were talking about. And, uh, they were looking for solutions and one of the solutions that some municipalities had came up with was you have to sick, say that this carrier is gonna be exclusive to your area. And what I didn't like about when we talked about that, there was some money involved also. But the other thing is, even though they were committed to being the only service one in your area, if they got another call, they didn't have to show up. Uh, so the plan was not a plan, not a good plan, uh, but I think the, the fire department, uh, has been, the chief has been addressing this problem because he'll same thing, they'll get a fire, they need an ambulance. But they can't get an ambulance. Uh, and some of the situations that became out of that, that we learned was a lot of these ambulance cover companies make good money doing transport. So you need to go to Lansing, ambulance company, so now they're in Lansing. Uh, doing transport, they make, it's, it's very good money for the carrier to transport people, uh, it, and they just load them up, get them stable, take them, and usually for an operation or whatever, but that's tying up a lot of the ambulance.
I will, um, piggyback off of that, so back in November, MMR did reach out to me, but with us going through elections, I think it was the end of October. I didn't want to make any commitments, but they wanted us to look into them being our sole provider, but on the same sense, Vienna Township, I believe, had signed that contract with MMR and I believe Forest Township is, so that puts us in the middle. So if all three of us are out here, I didn't understand where, if they're getting a phone call from Forest, the forest is number one, Vienna is number one, that is number one. So unless they're gonna have three ambulances sitting on standby out in this area, I think the response time is gonna be about to be the same, but we're all three signing up to that as.
That was my concern when, when we reviewed it, that you're, you're not gonna come in and say, yes, I'm gonna take care of your area exclusively, all right?
And they do make the money, working in a nursing home, transporting patients to the hospitals, to dialysis, to different things like that. They do make a hefty amount of money off the insurance payment for that.
I just want to say too, that we've had an ambulance come out here in cemetery for a couple of days, this past week.
As we're right in the middle, sorry, MMR, and we're right in the middle of Vienna and Forest Township, so that's why they were trying to get our township and that kind of.
Why do we not have paramedics at the fire department that could at least respond and work on an emergency while they're waiting it out?
I'm gonna assume that that would have to be addressed by the fire authority looking at.
Yeah, I think it's the, the problem we have right now is, you know, we have a full volunteer fire department. But most of these guys got full-time job. Uh, the only, uh, in the daytime particularly challenging to have firefighters, because there's gotta be somebody that's here and they would also have to be fully trained like that. So it'd be, once they're fully trained like that, you know, unless we could train them and then commit them, they go somewhere else. So you're not gonna have a firefighter sitting around waiting for something to happen at your fire station that's fully trained as a, a paramedic, that's, that's proper.
But it could be done, right?
Yes, if you pay, you, you could, you could make that happen.
It may.
Yeah, I just wanted to address, you talked about the contracts. Uh, that is a big issue with the county, it's caused a lot of confusion, uh, that is part of the problem, some of the townships have done that in municipalities. Uh, nine-one-one's, uh, attorney advised him not to do it because it's illegal. Uh, so that's a big concern. My advice to you is to wait a little bit before you make that type of commitment. I don't know what that study's gonna come out and say concerning those, uh, contracts, but according to a number of attorneys, even their own attorney, they are illegal. So, you know, you could talk to your own attorney.
I, I was gonna say, that, sure, if I may, real quick, um, I just want to add to that too, the, just so that everyone's aware that, uh, police and fire department are public services and, and EMT uh, is a privatized, uh, service, so it's, you know, so a lot, a lot of times people don't realize, um, where one ends, where one job ends and the other one begins. And it's just, and to kind of edge everyone's points, um, it's just that EMT, EMTs are paid differently. It's, it's, it's a whole different thing. The company is, you know, a profit-based company, it's, it's a private sector job, it's not a part of a public service. However, uh, with that in mind, I think we have an old building over there that could be used as a uh, staging point for EMT services, I think we've mentioned it before. I'm not the only person that's, uh, had this idea in the past, uh, but if we would maybe take an initiative to reach out to some of these emergency, uh, services that, uh, maybe they want to use our building out there for a staging point, if it's possible here.
Thank you, Eric, did you have something to?
Yeah, I'm, that's gentleman, I don't believe it, but anyway. Why, he said to wait on, so let's just wait for the people to die in this township. That's what's gonna happen, you're gonna have other people die.
Yep.
And that's bull.
Well, I don't, I think you have to listen to the details of it, I didn't ask how he said.
He said, wait, let's wait and do it later on, not right now. Meanwhile, you could have.
I think it'd gather, gather the facts, I mean, for me.
I think, I think he was referring to what Tim is, don't sign a contract right now. He's not saying per, don't pursue it, don't sign a contract.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda, um, is there any other?
I have a public comment. So who is the representative on this board for the nine-one-one consortium to represent the upper township? Who goes to the meetings?
I am filled in on meetings, yes.
And go to all the meetings?
No, I will read the agenda.
Okay, that is correct. The only person that can get a vote with the, uh, about this issue is the supervisor, no matter who goes, whether it's a trustee, treasurer, whoever, only the supervisor have a vote in this matter?
Okay.
Is, is that correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, so when they did vote about, um, putting the ambulance, different companies, about who was gonna represent this place and who was gonna represent that place, were you gonna have it in your township, were you at that meeting?
No.
Did you vote?
No.
Did you represent the residents of the township?
I did not go to that meeting.
I think so.
Thank you, Nicole.
Welcome.
Any other public comments? Uh, moving on to correspondence, we don't have any supervisors report. So I will update on the Francis Road Bridge over Butternut Creek. Uh, we did have a meeting down at the Genesee County, um, and Representative Green was there. He is trying to give us, um, some funding from the state of Michigan, hopefully they can get, um, something in their budget for us to do that, it is a million-dollar bridge to do, um, if not, we'll be looking at alternate avenues. Trying to apply for grants, but that's not looking good because of where it's rated. Um, as far as the bridge doesn't get enough traffic. Um, so it's rated pretty low, so grants don't really look good, so if, um, all else fails, the township will be responsible along with Genesee, that's like the cost of that bridge. And it is going to be a couple of years before that bridge can be addressed at all. Um, township audit is gonna begin the week of June ninth, we did have the bookkeepers in here yesterday preparing for that. Um, and Yonio is set to start Monday the ninth. Um, our final report, I did get that submitted to the state of Michigan, so we should be wrapped up with that. Um, also, the public hearing, from my understanding, the master plan, being at the workshop the other evening, is forecasted hopefully for September. Um, and then I wanted to let the board know that the Bedford Farmers and Flea Market, this was adopted, I put the information in your box. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and take the initiative to start that back up, but this was adopted by the township board years ago. Shelley, yeah, I had brought it, if you want to look back at it, you can see, uh, but Farmer's Flea Market, which is awesome, it's at the pavilion, I'd encourage any residents to, um, if they want to participate, for vendors, um, rental spaces, um, vegetable stands, um, anyway, I want to take the initiative to start this back up in June. Um, and I will get the information to the court and the office and um, accept the application and everything and repetitive, so just to let the board know and the residents know that we'll be starting.
I have a really question on that.
Yes.
On, on that thing. Who's overseeing that?
What do you mean?
Uh, who's overseeing that out there?
What do you mean overseeing it, they have to come in and they have to, so then you look at the application, there's like a whole procedure they have to.
What I'm saying is, you guys have the final say, if people, you gotta, excuse me, because I'm having a rough time breathing.
Bye.
Okay, here's what it is. You, uh, overseeing that and you people want to say they can't bring this in, if you don't like what they bring in, you tell them they can't, it's in the same, there's no denying it. What, what right gives you guys to do that? People bring stuff in, they should be able to sell it, you, you guys.
There's certain procedures that are in here, if you want to make a motion to amend me of this at any time, you're more than welcome to.
I definitely want to get a mo- a motion amended, because this is crazy.
So read it over and then let us know the next meeting, what you'd like to amend out of this.
I'd like to make a motion right now that we.
Wait, we're in supervisor report, that's not an addition on the agenda. So you guys can vote, or you can bring it back. It's already been accepted by the board of trustees.
Who can accept this? You never brought it before.
This board did not, it's already been amended.
So shouldn't you bring it?
So it's, it's on this board.
Not by this board.
No, it's not by this board.
If they stop doing it.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue, if you guys have an issue with it, you can bring it back to the next meeting and we do this stuff.
But you just like.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the treasures.
You play a game, she just whiffs once.
Pass it to the treasures.
Main sponsor.
Yes.
Okay, so I give everybody the, everybody's got the sheets. So in the general fund, we have two million, one hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-one cents, that's in our general fund. Um, I'm happy to say that our Michigan class has earned thirty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars in interest. And good job, that's it, good job and interest. Lamia, do you have a quick report to share with us?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, clerk and deputy have been, excuse me, continuing election training, including in-person training at Montrose Township. Clerk and deputy clerk have both been commissioned as notorious public. The Genesee County Health Department cleared the old cemetery for burials near Gray's, occupied by victims of the Spanish Flu. Uh, we are continuing to digitize cemetery records. We have had so far nine burials and one dis and re-interment in twenty twenty-five, two more scheduled for later this month. Uh, deputy received MTA certification in cemetery management and MTA certification in FOIA training. FOIA guidelines and public summary have been drawn up for approval by the board. And appointment of a FOIA coordinator. Clerk's office has an appointment this week to get an updated cemetery map with all the sections included. Deputy clerk attended CDVG training downtown plant. And, uh, we've been working with Benny and Thomas, they have, um, compiled a single maintenance log for all the equipment. Um, and we're ready, ready for the audit. Um, and we're ready for the audit.
Awesome. Thank you, Andy. I will move on to bills for approval. I'll make a motion to approve the bill for April twenty twenty five.
Second.
There's no discussion of the vote. Hey, there's no discussion, Amy. Can we get a roll call, please?
Kinda?
Yeah.
Patrick Tech?
Yes.
Chip Brunner?
Yes.
Eric Gunnals?
Yes.
Christine Taylor?
Yeah.
Stacy Wells? Rachel Stinkie?
Yes. Motion passed six zero. Okay, we'll move on to committee department reports. Um, so the senior point, sorry, the senior center report um is unpublicated, unsubstantiated, sorry, from October first, twenty fourth through March thirty first, twenty fifth, five hundred and nine, forty eight new seniors in February of twenty twenty five. The twenty twenty five first quarter mileage disbursement from MTA was one thousand, two hundred and sixty two dollars on my expense. Senior Power Day is May twenty first at Crossroad Village. They'll be offering free transportation. The kitchen remodel is set to begin the first or second week of May. We will move all operations to the Thafford Township call and a runner sale brought in a total of three thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars. So thank you to all of our residents that have participated in the donation for that. Uh, can you go to fighter already report? What's it from?
Sure. Uh, not a lot uh the going on. They uh they completed the roof replacement on station one um last month. Um, we had a grant, we got a grant from a twenty five hundred from one hundred club and we used it on new face shields. They completed the whole hose testing. Um, and that's not all I have. There was fifty calls, six in Clive. Uh, sixteen in Bedford and twenty seven in Vienna and two out of the area, which is a lot of calls for it. But just a little note there that the I looked at the the percentages and that percentage, and I didn't put Clive in there, but the percentage is um seventy percent Vienna and thirty percent Bedford, which, and I mention that because when you look at our funding, it's very close to what we pay in real close. Be seventy thirty, you know, and sometimes it fluctuates, but it's very close to the range. So it's nice to see that, you know, we're paying for, we're not, seem to be paying for more than we're getting at this point.
Does that go by population? Does that go by population?
Uh, the percentage involves?
Yeah, well, no, I mean, like, like the the percentage that we pay, is that originally was that originally based on of uh population?
Just it's based on just a mill of personal and real property.
Um, Ms. Janice, would you like to share Ohio Park and Rec report with us? It's on the library.
I have two months worth of minutes to go with.
Just the highlights, pretty much.
Charts and recs. In March, they had a visitor from Asylum San Church come in and they wanted us to fund their disco program. It was an easy, uh, I gave you all the minutes on that. It was supposed to be an easy course. And but we followed up with it the next meeting. It's not going to happen because actually in the parks bylaws, we can't. And you're a private property.
Can you pull the light a little bit closer to you? Can't hear you hardly.
Hold on, hold on here.
Is it even on?
I don't know. Is that better?
Yes.
Um, and then we talked about Easter egg hunt, which happened Saturday, April nineteenth. There were a lot of people that showed up for that. And that was how then the park, we did all the candy and eggs and the gifts turned out pretty well. I don't know if anybody here, but um Dawn Rankovitz is now representing the school board. I thought she was going to come and represent that for you, but she's not a member. But no, I asked her, she's representing the school. Don't you think that she's a candidate? I think it was in the parks. We're back to working on the zombie one. That was it. No, I agree. In March, we had talked about guarding alarm. I think I told you about that. We decided we're going to cancel that contract because you're not really. It's not connected to anything. And guardian wanted to give us a deal. Because then we said, no, we're not going to do that because we're still not connected to anybody. So even if the alarm goes off, it wouldn't do any good. Um, and when they're talking about changing the credit unit too, I guess they're on campus with Genesis. You know, they said there's some mistakes. And the parking lot has been redone, but they're going to strip it in late spring. In the middle of the back parking lot, it's not stripped yet. And they had a book sale last weekend. And that was very nice. There were a lot of people there getting out. Um, and they had a nest out in the ceiling. And they never did figure out what kind of nest. But they got that replaced, got it rid of it. And then the furnace was broken, so they had to have somebody come out and repair it. And then the next month, we agreed to pay a bill. I think it was like six hundred and seventy nine dollars for a new molder for the furnace. And they're talking about changing their fiscal year to match Vienna Township. So their audit could be done with Vienna Township, but they're having their audit done right now. So they were going to talk to the auditors about how they would go about changing their fiscal year to match Vienna Township. Cause then they would just add it on to Vienna Township. And the elevator is open again. So we had to walk up.
I was mentioning that before the meeting, that elevator has a lot of problems.
Straight down.
Yeah, because they're just using the stairs now. I don't know what they're going to do for handling stations.
I think that was that. Thank you, Ms. Jan. Appreciate the time you get to those four. Um, Mr. Warren, landing commission left.
That must be the brief version that you have there.
Yeah, this will be the brief version. Not much for you. Um, S D G Ventures, you've got them on your agenda for tonight. Just to let you know that we did uh recommend the processor application, uh you guys deal with the license, but we did recommend this processor license. They did come to us uh in twenty two, uh twenty twenty two for the grow license and processor license, but for reasons, they did not follow through with the processor license with the state, so we had to redo their site plan and review. Uh, we did provide blueprints on the table of what their upgraded building and stuff is. So we had no problem redoing it again, but the time limitation had run out, so it required them to reapply and go through the process again. So that was all that was. They've had a grow license and been in operation since twenty twenty one. And I don't know of any problems that we've had with them uh in their business there. Uh, we'd also been dealing with uh half alone companies, Bray Road. This is the county line store. There's photos of what they want to have for a gas island they put in. Uh, county line store has been in existence since the sixties. We went back on the records and it started out as a little mom and pop garage. Picture car type deal and evolved into what it is now, but it was on uh residential zone property prior to the township ever having a zoning act. So it was grandfathered as a non-conforming business. And it was on our master plan radar to try to update it somehow uh in this come along, an opportunity come along for a three island gas pump in there. I'm sure the reps will be here to explain it to get further. Uh, but it does correct an issue we had in our master plan. And we do recommend that it be rezoned to limited commercial. And uh we do have this for your not extra knowledge too. We did uh have contacted the state and county uh environmental people waiting for a ruling because Dead Creek runs on two sides of that property. So no site plan review will proceed until we have paperwork for that. And also one resident had a question on adverse effects on his property values if they did put a gas island in. And according to our accessory fields, that there will be adverse effects. If anything, it may increase some values because people like to have convenience nearby. So, and I did post it on three of the township Facebook pages plus the township page itself. Uh, overwhelming majority of people were in favor. There was really just a handful of complaints, people who were based on increased traffic. Uh, that I don't foresee. Personally, we did foresee increased traffic on the planning commission because of the location, it's not going to change the traffic pattern. People going out of the way to look there and get gas. So that's just a little background history on that one. And uh solar, we haven't had any recent meetings with E D F uh renewables on your solar plan. They do have the public forum for May got canceled. They did reschedule it. As far as I know, right now is June tenth. From five to seven, they have the hall reserved to put on a public presentation. So I don't have any more updates on on their status there. And planning commission is going to continue to work on a battery storage uh amendment to our solar ordinance. That's in the process. And also I know you got Skyway towers here and I think we've already dealt with that one time before to report to you that uh what held us up was uh setbacks and what the Z B A gave them a variance on setbacks. I'm sure John and Eric can explain a lot more on on what it are than representatives too. And you should have, I believe, a certification from a engineer uh on the the false hour why they approved the setbacks from Z B A. So the other questions?
Yeah, for you. How close to the county and our beauties township line is the gas station going to be?
Gas station is on the Thafford side of the line. It's right on the very corner.
Right.
Their partial, their partial borders, Willie Grove and Bray Road.
Is it in three hundred feet though?
Of our view?
Yeah.
Yes, gotta be. It's right next to us, right across the street.
Our view have been told that that's what they're planning on doing?
No, we haven't notified them. Not that I'm aware of. The zone of their their business is contained within our township.
I thought the law stated that anybody within three hundred feet had to be told.
They would get any, they would get a public hearing announcement. When we had the public hearing for it, they would get mailing of the public hearing. The township itself would not be able to fight. Because they don't own prop, the township doesn't own proper. Property orders within three hundred feet get a public hearing notice.
Right. I just didn't want to even just come back with somebody that in the middle of a building and somebody goes, hey, we weren't told. Not everything.
But Sammy does our public hearing notices for us. Everybody within three hundred feet gets a gets a letter. And it does cross township borders, cross the county lines. If we do something on Saginaw Road with marijuana businesses, people in the county are getting notified. So it all encompasses that. As far as the township itself, no, they didn't get any phone calls.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, we'll move on to old business. Um, I put leftover equipment on there. Um, we did have um, maintenance went out and they took some pictures. Um, this obviously is not all of the equipment, but it's the start of the equipment. I think they're going to start with some action on it. We do have a couple of different options. Um, we can go back with an auction. I can reach back out to the auction companies that we had talked to previously, now that everything is out of litigation. Um, I think they'd be more apt to move forward too. Um, or we can move forward to posting it and taking assignment bids like we do when we get houses from um the county. And we can post it and do a assignment bid auction as well. So I don't know. I'm just looking for some action from the board so that we can start moving along here.
They want to make a motion that we do the silent bids just so that we can discuss things.
You're not going to make any money on that. You're not going to make no money on the silence.
Yeah, and you go ahead and do that, but I I would recommend the auction only because.
I'm just trying to put it out there so we can discuss it.
Oh, yeah, I would recommend we re-approach the auction and just because, yeah, I think you'll make more. They do all the advertising.
Hold on, somebody's got a second.
Hold on. Yeah, I was going to say, do you want to keep your motion on the table?
Yes, that way we can. Then we can discuss it even.
So John, you recommend the auction?
Yeah, and that's only why, because they'll take care of the advertising. I think you'll get a little locally, you're only going to be advertised locally and you're going to get a bid and we're going to be obligated to take it. Um, where I think if it's spread out in a bigger market, plus there's going to be none of this, oh, you sold it to your buddy, or you sold it to my friend. There's none of that because the auctioneer, that's their baby. Uh, we got to pay them a percentage, but I uh I think uh, and it's all done. They come on site. They auction and we, and they have whatever it is, three days to get it out of here.
Do we, do we have to go with three different auctioneer bids or can we just pick one?
We don't. I'm just actually, like I did last time, a lot of them have different stipulations and different things. I have reached out to all of them. I think one of them was down at the plant and one of them, I believe a lot of people in Thafford may be familiar with. They were allowed their stuff through that auction. Yeah, they were great. Um, they didn't touch it last hand because of the litigation situation going on in that. So I think that they'll be apt to.
Would they come here or do we take it there?
Nope.
They come here.
They'll sell it just like it was a business that went out of business and they'll, they'll set it up. There'll be auction day. They'll advertise, they'll bring the guy here. And it's, that's it. One day.
So I can um, if you withdraw your motion, I can make a different motion.
What's wrong?
Okay.
Or we can do a roll call. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, because I will come on anyways. I just wonder.
So do a, do a roll call on how the motion, the motion was to go with the assignment bid for the leftover equipment, I believe. Ken?
No.
Pat? Tim?
No.
Eric?
We were just trying to speak out on one of the options so we can discuss it. That's the only reason I made the motion.
She's just trying to get it on the table so we can talk about it.
Okay, but you could have just drawn the motion and we didn't have to vote on it.
Yeah, but it's just.
Yes. Um, Rachel?
No. Okay, motion failed.
I got a question.
Okay, um, hold on. Let's get another motion on the table to move forward with um all right, option pending the board's review of their agreement.
Second.
Oh my God, all right.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, so can having the township board's review of the agreement?
I do have one question. If uh they come back with a ridiculous, what is our limit as far as their cut?
Well, it's the all that and paperwork. That's what they did last time. They had an agreement, set a percentage and everything was wrote down. So that's why I put in our motion pending a reassessment agreement.
We'll see the contract.
They take a conference fire fee too. They all right.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna take a fee.
Um, roll call, please. Andy, when you're ready.
John?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion passed, that is the arrow.
Six zero.
Sorry.
We're excellent one.
She had surgery. She can't see it.
Yeah, that's the most important was Skyway Tower. Uh, new business. Um. I got, uh, does anybody want to put a motion on the table with this one?
I'll make a motion that uh we follow the uh planning commission's recommendation and allow Skyway towers to put that tower up on.
Hey, is there any support on that motion? That's for. Maybe the move forward of discussion on that motion. Um, then I would, I would ask for you guys to join us in case the board may have any questions through this discussion um relating to this project.
Just a quick.
One second, one at a time.
Yeah. I um just kind of, I'm kind of surprised right now, and that is because uh there were a substantial number of residents who were against the tower and I don't see them here tonight. I just want to make sure that that.
So normally the planning commission is the one, that's where they have the public.
The public hearing.
Correct.
Right.
So unless they're following their agendas for the board, they're not going to catch it.
And I agree on that, the initial one, there was a lot of, quite a few, but on the second one, when the last one they were there, there was I didn't hear any, no one came to the movie, so I don't know what happened, if they threatened them all or what happened, but I'm just kidding. Uh but uh there was not much. And I don't know why.
This is a cell phone tower, right?
Yeah.
That's it.
So, hopefully that black hole goes away.
And that's what they're hoping for, they're Verizon, correct?
Uh I'll put my name on the record real quick, Richard Russell, uh three eighty North Old Woodland in Birmingham, Michigan. I'm with uh the law firm, so I'm trying to represent Skyway Towers, Amy Rodriguez is here with me, uh to answer your question, um uh Mr. Young, the uh we are looking to fill a very substantial gap that exists. A gap is the the distance between south towers under which there is not an efficient coverage ratio determined by scientific radio frequency engineers, yes, there's a large gap. Uh we're looking to locate that uh site, we uh were diligently with the zoning board to obtain uh the variance that was approved for the setbacks uh and worked uh well with the township in that regard, the planning commission also recommended this for approval of special land use uh and site plan, uh just as a very quick reminder, I'm sure the board is aware, this site was approved uh for what we're proposing back in two thousand seventeen, but for economic reasons, the tower was never constructed on the uh we've property, so we're looking to complete that coverage now, this is Verizon, it's the primary gap, primary anchor tenant. And uh other uh carriers are allowed by law and by lease arrangements between the carriers to co-locate, that's the term. So you'll have the AT and Ts and the T mobiles and others, so it'll, it'll fix some substantial problem.
And I agree with her as a whole there, I had a couple of concerns, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. You know, uh when I looked at that, I pulled every tower in this area, there was ten towers. And your tower claims it's been there since two thousand eighteen, and I know that's when you got the original permit. But for me, I found that a little upsetting because carriers that were coming looking this area since two thousand eighteen thought there was a new tower on Lake Road, which there was not.
Yeah, it's, it's very strange, maybe she came up with the planning commission, where everyone answered their question, it's, it's, it's obviously not there.
No.
So, the tower was approved back in that period of time, it was scheduled to be constructed for various economic reasons, it was never constructed, so. Uh but it's, if, I guess you did come up with the planning commission, that there was some mapping that suggested that it was there, but obviously it's.
And my other concern, you know, and 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 I definitely know there's a black hole there, so I am in full support of that. But I also am a little concerned with uh, now that I look, when I pulled those, I found three abandoned towers. So, makes me wonder now, should you have a bond to have this thing tore down at the end of its life, because those are still sitting out there. And including the one on Fair and Road you're leaving is not abandoning. But there's two towers right over there, within a mile and a half of here that are going to be there and you're going to be off them and what's going to happen to them towers? So, it's a little concerned from the legal standpoint, whose responsibility will that be to disup, to take that down in forty years from now?
It's absolutely the obligation and and every lease that I've ever seen in this, in this uh industry for the tenant, which is the cell tower provider, to dismantle, to take away, dispose of any tower once the lease expires. In fact, most municipal ordinances, I'm not particularly positive about Bedford in this instance. Most ordinances have a requirement that you demonstrate to the community that that provision's in the lease, so that there's no question about removal and that, you know, you don't have eyesores on towers that don't exist any front of them.
Well, thank you.
Skyway doesn't have any other towers in the area, but I understand your question.
Why are those towers no longer in use, they just?
Well, I asked this, I asked this question during the planning commission and and her answer was, and you can tell them again, their engineers felt that they couldn't get there from there, and I, so I don't know, that's, or is that, did I get that right?
It's radio frequency engineering, right, you have these spots and towers that are actually too close. You can have calls that are dropped because the 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 pinging from your phone or from your computer device doesn't know which tower to ping off, they have to be a certain distance apart, but they can't be more than approximately a mile apart, or else you lose the the pinging coverage, which requires us to fill these gaps into the licensing requirements with the FCC, but and to answer your question, you can have instances where towers, um I don't know the history of the specifics, but uh maybe if Amy has a little more perspective, I don't, I don't know if Skyway already are leasing any of the towers in the area.
So how much property or how far would it expand the servants?
Amy, do you know that, what is the, would be the coverage, just in layman's terms of the?
I mean, generally, they're, well, they're trying to connect to the existing networks that, you know, because this project did, started with Verizon, so Skyway and Verizon are working together on this, so Verizon is trying to connect to their existing towers, generally, we're looking about a mile. So, in a radius, yes, so this one, I believe our initial search area, they gave, the engineers gave us a half a mile radius to search in, so they needed something within that half mile that would, so that it would connect to the existing network.
And there, and there's no doubt, there's a dead area over there. Right on, right in that area. So, okay, anyways, I'm, I'm done.
Any more discussion, has anybody ever uh approached with Christmas tree tops, have you ever done that?
Uh I have dealt with in the past uh the the concept of what's called a monopine, which is actually a, a term that relates to a monopole that's designed like a Christmas tree. Um it's, you know, there's, there's various ups and downs regarding that kind of puzzle. That has not been the proposal that was uh brought before the zoning board of the planning commission this, in this instance. Um it it does arise in certain circumstances, there's one right near my house. An old uh
Seed year to look at.
Seminary ground that allows for it to kind of blend in with some trees, I I see it and notice it, some people, once you notice it, you can't take your eye off it because it looks, actually, once you see it, you can't see, you see, it it doesn't look like a tree to those who know where it is, so there's ups and downs, and that's what I meant by that. That was not part of the uh the suggested uh uh pathway of moving forward in this particular instance.
Okay, no more discussion, can we get a roll call please, Andy?
What do we vote on, passion?
Will you read the motion back please, Miss Andy?
Hope to follow or uh follow the planning commission recommendations to approve the Sky Tower, Skyway Tower.
Okay, roll call when you're ready. Pat?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yeah.
Tim?
No.
Eric?
No.
Chris? Yes. Rachel? Yes. Motion failed, wait, no, it passed four to.
Four to.
Sorry, I almost ended that one for you guys. All right, thank you guys for coming this.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to the Bedford Township Marijuana Facility Permit, um Miss Tammy Batherby, and we buy our permit.
Absolutely.
Um I think she did a great job on it. So, she gave us an example of the norm it looks like, so this is now, well, once we approve it, I'd like to approve it. Uh the permit that we will issue to our marijuana facilities when we approve them um or when we renew, approve the renewal, so I make a motion to accept the new layout. Uh yeah, to accept the new layout of the marijuana facility permit. Um I just to take license off of it, so this is a permit, not a license, the state issues the license, we issue the permit.
Does someone change?
Uh marijuana facilities license, this is actually marijuana facilities permit.
Other than that, same.
We permit them, in our two, state of Michigan.
Right, no, I get that, other than that, that's the only change.
That's the only thing that I see, I'm sure. I'm second.
But your motion is going to be to accept it with that change?
Correct.
Do you, do you have to remember a question, or is it?
That's fair enough.
Um now, every word license needs to be changed to permit, correct?
Yes. There's no other discussion, um all in favor of accepting the new marijuana facility permit for the Bedford Township, say aye. Aye, I'll post a nay.
Aye. Uh I didn't get a chance to.
That's okay, motion passed five one. Okay, we're gonna move on to S D G Ventures LLC. Um I'll make a motion to approve S D G Ventures LLC ninety-four oh eight North Saginaw, so we're required by a site plan review and special land use for a marijuana processor facility.
Okay, this is the new one.
Yes, processor, so they had applied for as a path and were approved at one time.
Inside, right.
This is a processor.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, okay, got it.
I'll support that, so I think we can talk about it.
Thank you, so Rachel.
John, so far, is there any more discussion?
Yeah, just, I mean, go ahead. And you're not in on it?
No, I'm the processor.
All right.
Yes.
And um, what were your names?
My name is Will, my last name is Kissel, I'm from Shelby Township, Michigan.
Does the owner of the facility live in the township?
No, he lives in Rochester.
I see something.
Yes.
Why, why isn't he here?
Wish I could tell you something.
He should be, he's one of the, he should be here.
I, I was sent both report uh in front of the planning commission and now today as well. So.
Um Tammy, I just clarify, did you verify that everything in the application was good?
Uh everything looked good to me.
Okay, and as far as have they paid the five thousand dollar fee, or are they waiting for approval, they paid it already?
Eight to five thousand.
Thank you.
Fine.
Um this one?
Okay, yes, I did read through that one, that's good.
I think this was also a recommendation, if I remember correctly, it was noted in their emails that the planning board really liked their presentation, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Um just going up there. No, in there. Um is there any more discussion or questions? If there's not, let's move forward with the roll call please, Andy. I'm kind of.
Yeah.
Patrick Tech?
Yes.
Tim Brenner?
Um no, only reason both know because they already have been here.
Okay. Brett Gons?
Yes.
Christine Taylor? Yes. Rachel Stanky? Yes, motion passed five one. Okay, now we're gonna move to S D G Ventures LLC ninety-four oh eight, I'll make that motion to renew their Class C recreational H E dash G C that they're, they're nine by three license permit they want.
Support.
Thank you. Um Tammy, can you validate if they are?
Compared to.
I have.
Okay.
You got one. Um now, this one here they emailed it on Thursday, last Thursday, after I had already. So, Rachel printed it out and gave it to everybody, so I didn't know of it until Monday, well, I had to come in Monday, but usually it's Tuesday. Um so I just looked it over briefly, I didn't get to scribble, your guys if it, everything was filled out properly or not. Um and I did there was something without all remember. Oh, he had, he had papers in here that he didn't need. Which I guess is totally fine.
Hmm.
And um they are asking for an extension of the five thousand dollar fee.
Can you reply back and say how long of an extension, no, they're asking, no, he didn't know.
What, was it, what, what do you mean by an extension?
She wants to know if the board will approve him, if we will maybe make a site note, and that would be due in sixty days or thirty days to work with him, because they have to pay that five thousand dollar incentive fee to the township. So he's just wondering if he, you know, had the mind on it, seeing right now.
I know, so, I don't.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as the motion says that if the fee doesn't get paid no renewal. So as long as the motion includes that, at times, then I'm okay with that, I'm sorry, now go ahead. I forgot my dumb one.
Um if you read our ordinance, our ordinance clearly states that a renewal must be done as if it's a new application. I'm looking at step two here. There's not even a check mark in any box, there's no facility business information, there's no nothing. Um despite what everybody's saying about we do not need to do this or that, uh according to our ordinance, we do need to do that. Because it states clearly, it must be done as it's a new year.
Absolutely.
And all the information must be included.
I usually fill that house and I go over the packet, like I said, I didn't get the packet.
She didn't get it.
Because it was after I left.
So we're just looking that his attestation is in here, which is included in the applicant, I see disclosure, A, property information, property owner statement that's provided access to, it's going to be bad issues, yeah. Okay, so those would all be within his original application.
That's not, the point is, the ordinance says the renewal must be just.
Right, I'm just trying to.
We can't go by original application.
I understand what you're saying.
Go by this here.
All I'm trying to state is that if they need to, they can pull copies from their original and just freeze them with the application.
I think we always hold it.
So not of the word provided.
This is all that was.
That's true.
Uh what we, that's what we had done. Yeah, what you printed out, you didn't.
Did you invite your contact yesterday or today and let them know that it wasn't completed?
I did not, because I was like way too busy dealing with my other stuff. I think this is page eight, it's not completed either.
Seven eight in the corner. So I'm gonna withdraw my motion, I don't know who's supporting that, Andy and John.
Yes.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion that this is table until fee is paid and the application is filled out completely.
So, our ordinance, so obviously, I didn't want to bring this up, I wouldn't include that in the motion because they are, they don't have to pay until after they're.
Hold on, I got.
I'm on board.
The ordinance right here. There.
I have the whole. I'm on board, I'm back for you.
The rules being that.
Did, or did you want to support that motion, Ken?
Yes, support.
Right, um if there's no discussion on that, we can move forward with the roll call.
I'm not sure what the motion was.
So the motion was to not to table that until the application is completed and the five thousand dollar fee is paid.
Right, but we already have a motion, a second on the floor.
We pulled that off.
You want to.
I withdrew it in general.
I'm gonna withdraw your advocate for my support.
Okay.
I had a pen and advocate support.
No. I think it was there.
So, so I'll withdraw my support. Yeah. So.
Now the motion is, you want to continue with the five thousand, I know the ordinance takes the other way, unless you want to review it, but.
I'd love to, but truly organize everything and I can't find nothing now.
Mm-hmm. Well, our performance.
And then our line of duty.
Um so.
He's gotta pay it anyways, uh so.
You'll have to approve the application, we'll put in our motion, I would do use to approve it, we have.
And we're not gonna approve it if that five thousand isn't there anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you, if that's, how do you want to do it?
So you just want to make a motion to table this until the application is completed in entirety.
And we can just hold it. Yes, I will withdraw my original motion and change it to table it until let me, its entirety.
Okay, did Tim support that change?
Yes.
Everything um.
Or the fashion that you need to.
Okay, so uh I, I totally get the, the board's hesitation on this, uh obviously, um you know, uh trusty cognitive, trusty tech are basically trying to put the brakes on this, hold them up a little bit. Uh so, if, if by chance they just um go approve this or when they're ready to pay would they have to wait for another, the next corresponding monthly board meeting, does that help that?
If it allows you, Tammy can contact them, let them know would be what I would direct them to do. Um and I may have to call a special meeting later this month, I'm not for sure yet on this time, if I do, I will just add them on that. As long as they come. As long as they come and they complete the application.
Okay.
But. While, while we're on that, um. When we get to the next set of them.
But then that, they would have to.
When we get to the next set of them, uh. It, or Michigan Pure.
Well, hold on, let's. I want to, want to jump out of my plan.
Right, and this is actually gonna all tie together when I say, um. It might be. Why I used to do a special meeting. Uh, and knock them all out at one time and still. Especially meet one, especially for another, especially, you know.
Right, definitely, no, I agree.
There's a lot of things.
So let's do, um, all in favor of tabling the S C G Ventures, um. Until the application is completed in entirety. And say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I oppose, say nay. Motion passed six zero. So now I want to move on to the pure farm, um. Again, Pammy, can you let us know if there's any errors within the application?
On this one here, there are four renewals. There is one Class C recreational. License. And three. Class C medical licenses. He paid his fee. For, for all four. So his five thousand for all four of them are paid. Um, he did owe. Uh, a five thousand dollar fee for a processor that was approved back in. I don't know, I can't. July. July or August of last year. He paid that. He, uh, paid a five thousand fee that was. A medical, another medical.
Is, are these applications that we're discussing right now?
Okay.
Are these applications?
Yeah, he saw it, he saw it. I'll tell you. On that. I do have. This from. The CRA. And this is on. Uh.
But you say no errors with the application itself.
I did not, I kind of went over them with him on a couple of them.
You should be going over all of them with everyone and then communicating if there's any barriers, so we don't have to. I already put the board of.
Yeah, I, well, I went over them with him to make sure that everything was kind of all done. Um, this here.
Can you like my seat?
Yeah.
It's not a copy.
This here is from the CRA, it's a, um. Oh, what do you want to call it, a formal complaint? This is, um.
Yeah. I don't know what to do.
This is, uh, one of these licenses. The adult Class C. Rec licenses. And I only found it on. The CRA website, he did not come in and let, you know. To let.
So I believe that this issue, if it was a previous. Situation had come up with another one. Um. And, uh, completely different, we had allegations, they, that came from the state. Uh. I think they, and it depends, I don't know if they have their genes to go in front of the state, you know. They have their.
This is in front of the state here to state their case.
This is, this is the only thing that I find on there, so it's just been a complaint, they haven't been able to justify or. Or what kind of a state regard.
But you're so.
If I, if I, if I, if I.
Yeah.
Yeah. Speaking of anywhere.
Anyways, um.
For Pammy.
Let me ask you, um, can I, can I ask?
I'm sorry.
So. How does the state deal with these, so that they get so many, what do they do? Hold their license, slap them on the head and give them a fine, what do they do?
I'm not really sure how they do it, um, because they, it takes. Some of them take like a year. Of them to go through and. Go to the next step and then I see a little. Another little publish there and there's another statement that I can.
I think the last one, if I remember correctly, they were in violation, and this wasn't, this company, it was a different company, they were in violation Julie had brought up for. Um, I had talked to, they actually had an attorney, the attorney had explained that they get their go arounds with the state, so it's just like if anybody had a complaint within our township. They could come to us and, and let us know what the complaint is, or even play out, so this is just a formal complaint. This doesn't say that they have been found, I don't believe in violation of it, so they have the chance for their attorney, who might know a little more than I do. To go in front of the board. At the state and explain their case, um, that attorney, which she was a. There was. That attorney went for.
Attorney, she needs to blow it out.
And I ended up having our attorney involved in those conversations as well. Um, because I thought initially that I would just have to shut them down. Based on the complaint, but he said, no, don't do that, it's out of play, it's forced to state.
Right.
So, right, and the state has, has, the state will have the jurisdiction to shut them down, even if we approve them today, if they're in violation of this, the state's gonna shut them down.
Yeah, if they shut them down, yeah, that makes sense.
The problem is, he didn't come in and tell us about this, we had to find out on our own, and I mentioned this. I think it was the last meeting I mentioned it, you guys told me, no, 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 he didn't have nothing, that was somebody else.
Well, I think that, uh, the last company, they're the same thing, didn't they?
Yeah.
They didn't come in and let us know of the complaints, but I'm not, I guess I'll have to go through the ordinance again and validate. Because they haven't been proved guilty of anything else, I'm thinking that once they state their case. I mean, they can have a complaint, but wouldn't the state have to find them at fault for their chapter reported to the board?
And I.
The board can. Just do their guilty of this, right, before they have a chance to just.
Right, and, and, as the, the other attorney explained, like, there's a, there's a process by which they appeal and, and dispute different. Complaints and whatnot, and then. There's arbitration and then there's. This, you know, this solution, resolution.
But, but irrelevant, if the state holds their license, they're done, right?
Correct.
So that's it, so if they, if they say you're done, they're done, right?
Yeah, so. Okay.
So. Um. Let me read this out of the ordinance, wait, an applicant or permit board has a duty to notify the township board in writing. If any owner, principal officer, director, manager, or employee within ten business days of any of the following events. Pending criminal charge and criminal conviction, whether it is a felony misdemeanor or violation of a local law. Related to the cultivation, processing. Manufacturing, storage, sale, distribution. Testing or consumption of any controlled substance. Basically, our ordinance says. They must tell us within ten days, he did not do.
With conviction, I hope whenever it's.
It's probably, it says a pending criminal charge also, that's pending.
Wait, but, but the only word is, is criminal, and I think.
The next page.
The difference.
Is, it could become criminal, we don't know.
Whether the, the technical violations of the CRA don't. Become criminal.
Well, violation of the local law related to the cultivation, processing. Manufacturing, storage, sale, distribution, testing, or consumption of any controlled substance. That right there. Whether it's. It says. Um, a pending criminal charge. And criminal conviction, so if he's charged and convicted, he has to tell us. Whether it is a felony, misdemeanor, or violation of a local law related to the cultivating, processing. Manufacturing, storage, sale, distribution, testing, or consumption of any controlled substance. Right there says that that license that he's trying to renew. I could not renew it because.
If we don't renew it, but yeah, he gets this, why clean this estate?
Come back and we could renew it then.
It'd be a.
Because we're just, but what we're doing is we're opening ourselves up, I just found out today, this is a great one too. The U S Department of Justice has what they call the. Public. Something, anyways, their whole entire, uh, existence is to go in and investigate. Governments, whether it's local, state, federal. I don't want to get investigated for anything. No, this guy, he didn't tell us. He's got three other on the board. That one, I say we deny, let him get it cleared up and come back in.
Add on him, I mean, my. This is just a complaint, it's not a conviction, it's not, nothing criminal, it's just a complaint.
Just a complaint.
It's two different things, yeah. Criminal.
Violation.
He's not violating, no, because he's got a complaint.
A complaint is saying that he violated the law.
Or. Number two.
Thanks, guys.
Number two, it's a violation of M M M A, M M F L A, and M R T M and M R A.
And guilty, it is a com, it's a com.
It's a violation, he had too many plants, regatta.
I think they're guilty of that. I mean, you deny somebody who has had their chance to go in front.
See, it's just.
Yeah.
The complaint, it says.
That's only we.
It said, the complaint says it could be health, safety, or security. So. You know. I don't know if that doesn't mean that. He has cameras, he didn't have his cameras operating, I mean, that. Seems like a lot to, uh, to, uh, deny him under a, I mean. If, uh, you know, if I was denied.
No, like.
Violation.
License every time someone complains.
Well, they just take the ordinance, write it out, and then let everybody do what they want anyways. We have stuff in writing, right here, in writing, and we're telling us that.
We see what you.
Why, why follow?
Do we have it in writing that it says they need ten forms for any formal?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
A violation of local law.
Uh, this isn't a violation of local law yet.
Then what is it?
This is a complaint.
And when they give you this, when you get caught as a drunk driver and they give you this, it's a complaint until when?
To.
You can get it. No, that's a conviction.
Conviction.
A complaint is a charge. You guys vote how you want to vote, I'm telling you, it says in the air, it's.
We're, I, the, I think the difference here, okay, is. Criminal code violations. Versus. A license application privilege. Uh. Skill error, you know, you, like, you, like, these companies get, these companies get cited all the time for these errors. And they have to dispute them, like, I mean, the average company gets about.
The complaint wasn't about a permit or, uh. An application violation, the complaint was about he had too many plants.
It's a, it's.
Signs the edit.
The complaint is. Based on the fact that he switched his licenses. From medical to rec and then back from rec to medical, and that's due to a change of the M T R A. Uh, the M R T A, because they changed a. Law at Lara that said you can. Do so many Class C roads for medical, whereas you could not before, and that, that changed, so they put out a. Hope notice about that change. Some of these changed their licenses, others didn't.
And I intervened just real quick, so this is, this is funny. Salads, who just came in front of us, that is who was in violation of the complaint that Julie had brought to the door, to the board. Chris Schmidtner, our attorney, and Mike Gilner, whom I had discussed that situation with. Had stated while a licensee is appealing a decision made by a state agency, they are permitted to continue operation. Which their letter mentions, is there a benefit to postings because I have to have to give a violation notice until we have received a determination from the state. That they have been denied after an administrative appeal. But he told me to call them, so they are able to continue. Operation while they are appealing a decision by.
That came from Gilner?
That came from Chris Schmidtner, who has handled all of our marijuana.
Right.
And Gilner's included in that as well, so.
Basically, Gilner's all of us.
Yes.
Who's Schmidtner?
Because I, uh, is it Schmidtner, Chris? I don't know how to.
Strip matter. That would be the attorney's name. Strip and you're Schmidt.
Well, that makes sense.
So, anyway, they have. I mean, that, that's.
Like, do we have a township?
Is there any discussion on that?
No.
Okay. Oh, shit, um, go ahead and hear roll call, please, Pammy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yeah.
Pat?
No.
Tim?
No.
Motion carried four two.
Of course.
Okay, go.
Let's move. I have a question, was the motion for. Just the, uh, adult one or for all of them?
So we can write that down. Because he has the four licenses. I think we should break it down.
Yeah, we should break them down, okay.
So I'll start with the motion to approve the Class C rec H U G C zero zero one two five six. For a machine pure, I have ninety two eighty six, I'm expecting.
Four.
Okay, roll call, can you move to a roll call now, please, please?
And just.
Yeah, which one did we vote on?
I'm just gonna do all of them again. Pammy, when you're ready. Right?
I might be.
We already did this first one.
Oh, was that what the complaint was for that one?
I think it was a lot, right?
They changed that.
Oh, okay, okay. So, yeah, let the minutes reflect the number of it.
So then I'll withdraw that motion since it was already made to approve the recreational one.
But we already voted on it. Can you do that?
Well, I'm withdrawing the motion because we already voted on it. And I'm. So who supported that?
I did.
Thank you, John, for the withdrawal, correct? So now I'll move forward with a motion to approve the Class C medical, G R C zero zero one six three three.
I support that.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Move forward with the roll call, please, Andy.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
No.
Tim?
No.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Motion carried four two. Okay, motion to approve Class C medical, G R C zero zero two six five sevens.
Support.
Yes, support.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thanks. No discussion, we can move forward with the roll call.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Tim?
No. No.
Motion passed, uh, four two. Then another motion to approve, uh, Class C medical, G R C zero zero two seven five eight.
Support.
Any discussion?
Support.
Move forward with the roll call, please, Andy, when you're ready.
Rachel?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Pat?
No.
Tim?
No.
Chris?
Yes. Motion carried four two. Okay, so we'll move on to ordinance number twenty five dash zero five dash zero seven. Uh, I'll make a motion that the separate township board adopts the ordinance twenty five oh five oh six. Uh, to amend the separate township zoning ordinance to rezone a personal property.
So we're doing, uh, I'll second this so we can talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
So we're doing spot zoning?
In this situation, yes.
And why are we doing spot zoning in other situations?
Because currently the county line that is going to be maybe possibly the gas station is as residential. And it does not fit residential, so we are trying to amend it to be local commercial.
And what kind of slip rates will probably look like after this, amending the ordinance, I mean, is this a one time thing? Or is this uh, anybody that wants to come in here and say, but I got an ordinance and you can change it?
No, so this is obviously a twenty four month. If you, um, the restrictions of any improvement, so the compounds have to be completed within twenty four months of a site plan. This was also addressed during our uh workshop that we had the other night for the master plan.
How many months?
They just got approved, they just did the public care and planning commission at the last. Upon approval. Um, so this would just rezone them, but the master plan, as has been going on through the committee. It's also looking at the math to make updates to that, this is one of the updates that's been brought to waitress attention. Um, which would then obviously if we support with the zoning ordinance being compliant with the master plan and. It will all click, but right now we just everything don't click, yeah, to amend it, um, to be appropriate.
And I can just elaborate, and the master plan, she's looking at them and her recommendation was to zone.
Right, right.
Weird ass little property over there that technically is commercial. Been commercial for a long time, but it's still residential, so her recommendation was even to go to that zone.
Well, my only concern is not with the changing of the ordinance, but with the spot zoning, it could get out of hand. Or. Everybody's coming in to do it next thing, you know, and it's like, you can't say no to anybody. Because you give them, give one, you gotta give all at once. And that's, do we have any kind of restrictions of, you know. Uh, we're gonna zone your commercial, but you have to have this, this, this in place, you know what I'm saying?
If, if I, if, if I may. Like to address uh that, um, so. So for example, I'll give you two examples, um, the school on Lewis Road, that was.
Right.
That was, yes, that was, that was rezoned, correct? And the uh, the person on Vienna Road with the um, uh, full. A rat hall or whatever you call it there, um, he requested a rezone, he was denied. So did the um, young lady that wanted to do the uh, a barn wedding venue, you know, she, she asked for rezoning, she was also denied.
Yeah, she's still there.
Well, that's the one that's on Vienna where the house.
That's the other one.
But that's because, that's because her home based business doesn't require her to rezone her property. Just the same thing with the other guy across the street. But in the case of the store at the corner of uh Bray and Willard. Uh, essentially you have a piece of property which. Um, and I, I pointed this piece of property out for years because it's a residential property that receives a liquor license. I mean, what other, what other piece, what other piece of residential property do you know of a separate township that can, that can. Not only apply for a liquor license, but get approved by the state for a liquor license.
I've heard of one anywhere.
Oh, I never did either, and, and, but in, in that township, we have the most unusual cases sometimes, so.
Needs to be brought up to, to complaints, and there's a lot of cases in the township that.
But to your point, so, you know, the. This, this, this one is a kind of a valid argument because if you came up to me tomorrow and said, hey, I just wanna be commercial. Then, what? But this guy's got a history of thirty years of being commercial. So I mean, so it fits, you know, but if he was to come up tomorrow and say, I just wanna put it commercial here, you know, we'd say, the planning commission would say.
Right.
Looking in the long run, the only thing I'm worried about is they, if they come up, say, hey, you know, I came up to John, I'm gonna open a business in my pole barn selling. Cow newer spreaders. Um, can I get commercial? Well, no, well then how come this guy over here got?
Anybody in the plant, anything more than applies.
To the rule.
All I say is I don't want the exception rule turning into lawsuits. Because we don't allow, I mean, to do some things or they're gonna want to sue us.
And you're right, years ago we did this, that's why they're, that's why they're all over, you know, the greenhouse, all of those were. Spot zonings that should have never happened. But, and they did, years ago they happened, but we're, we're a little more rigid now than in those days.
So when we change this ordinance, that's, what is that going to allow us to do?
It shouldn't amend the ordinance to consider them local commercial, they have twenty four months from the site plan.
So this is for that place?
Right, that specific. Particle numbers are listed as well. Four forty green corn bread.
It also gives them what, the twenty four months to begin and complete. Or no, from the time of, from the time of starting.
Yeah, like Kevin said, though, they're still waiting on the Michigan EPA. Is that gonna cut into their twenty four months?
No, site plan approval.
So. Well, then the clock starts.
Yeah, this just goes back to the plan.
This is just rezoning them and then they'll go back to the planning commission for the site plan, site plan will have to be approved by them. We'll get that and approve the site plan as well.
That makes sense.
Right now we're just doing the rezoning and then so that we follow. The progress stops in the state.
And, you know, again, I think uh Kevin mentioned it earlier, that the place was a. Basically a commercial store, uh, long before the zoning laws ever existed.
Yeah, it probably should have been commercial.
Day one, day one, you're right, this is overlooked, this.
Okay.
Okay, so let, um, I had made the motion on that, please support of that. Nice. Okay, um, if there's no more discussion, we can move with a roll call on this, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Tim?
No.
Motion carried five one. Okay, um. Move on to separate township FOIA procedures and guidelines. Um. I am going to forward with a motion for the township. To approve the separate FOIA procedures and guidelines. Have been presented to us, as presented, I should say.
Support that. I'm gonna have a question. Um, so do we have a current policy?
Well, we do that is outdated, um, so Andy, she had took a certification course through the M T A. Um, she has revised and updated her procedures that probably. Actually, so I should probably just part of the discussion, I should make up in my motion, I'll amend that actually to exclude, to withdraw. Any approved FOIA procedures. And guidelines previously adopted. And to accept the new separate township FOIA procedures and guidelines as presented. We would, the fee schedule is gonna be a separate adoption, I'm doing this as two motion. On acceptance of FOIA procedures and guidelines first, and then I will do a second motion to follow for the fee schedule. But you have support that amendment to my motion that I just did?
Yes. Yeah, that's actually what I, what I was looking for, you got, you need to have a part of it, it's you're getting rid of the old one.
Um, do you guys have any questions or concerns regarding?
Yeah, the FOIA thing. If, I forget her name, the dozer, whatever it is, I don't know, I keep forgetting. But anyway. For her to do the FOIA, she's supposed to go through the board.
We're not even there yet, we're accepting procedures and guidelines.
And these uh. And sitting board members. Has to pay fees if you're.
No, Eric had made a motion years ago, if you go back on the minutes, that, yes. No, he made a motion years ago that the elected officials do not pay for documentation.
Okay, so. He can do this to you, well, you just, you just rescinded everything from back then.
I, that wasn't included in the procedure of policy, I didn't resent the motion. That was a part of the previous procedure of policy. It was just a motion that Eric had stated at a meeting.
And that's the only one, that's the only question I got.
If I, if I may, um, give a little reason behind that. Um, I want, uh, I want this township to operate with a sense of transparency. Then when new trustees get elected, they have an opportunity to, you know, come in and simply ask for something or they wanna see something. Um, in, this doesn't mean that, you know, as a trustee, any one of us goes in and then just. You know, just creates a monstrous list, you know, for all things specific that you wanna see. And, you know, placing an undue burden on the, on the office people. Uh, I would just say that it's there as an option, you know, and you say, hey, oh, that's. Oh, that's interesting information, I wasn't aware of that, can I get a copy of that? You know what I mean, and it should be as, as, as a courtesy to us as said, yes, yes, you may get a copy of that, no problem, here you go. You know what I mean, and it's just to, it's just to create, you know, a comfortable formality and, and get rid of cumbersome and uh. You know, all that, now, if the trustee causes a bunch of problems and they, you know, they're in here, you know. Five, you know, four days a week, take up three, four hours a day, you know, demanding, you know, FOIA requests, well then that's kind of different. Okay, and I kind of say, you know, maybe at that point, maybe you need to start paying for it, or maybe you need to, you know, go through a proper procedure of filling out a FOIA request. But other than that, simply put, in a general sense, you want a piece of general information. Should be able to walk in as a trustee and the same for us, and she can just be, have the respect and the decency to give it to you.
And I uh, I completely agree with what you're saying on that, and so. Now, as for rebuttal, when a trustee walks in and says, hey, you know, I'd like to get this, and. He's given the runaround, he's denied, and he has to go, hey, I'm gonna put in a FOIA, you won't give me what I'm asking for. And then he is forced to, he, she is forced to become a burden or a problem. That is also unacceptable.
I would.
On the part of.
I see your part, I wouldn't say that, I, because that's not for a meeting, because we aren't talking about the elected officials, I can bring back a resolution because I honestly wanted to address this myself. I think that any of us, if we want documentation that is outside of our board packets. Or outside of the committee that we're working on, that we should still have to complete a FOIA form. Requesting that information, so that the fee is waived at all times. And the reason I say that is because I think all of us deserve, again, transparency. I should be able to know what Eric is pulling out here, you should be able to know what I'm pulling out of here. Tim should be able to know what I'm requesting outside of my fourth half year, I do feel that way, I think that. Um, that keeps the track running. We're not gonna do that today, this is just an idea that we can bring back to that board meeting and take it around a little bit, um.
You're not saying charge a fee, you're just saying fill out the form. So you see what that is?
We can do a resolution.
That's reasonable.
I filled out that FOIA paper, I asked for.
We're, we're gonna do that, we'll do the trustees, let's move forward with the procedures that has nothing to do with elected officials, I don't wanna get off topic here. But we can drop that in the next meeting, we'll leave that. So moving forward with this, no more discussion on this topic of the FOIA procedures and guidelines, Andy, please, only a roll call vote.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to the fee schedule. Um, so there was a couple of decisions that we had to make, so it says, uh, the cost per copy of letter sized paper eight and a half by eleven. Uh, max of ten cents, cost per copy of legal sized paper eight and a half by fourteen, cost max of ten cents. And the percentage of fee for good faith deposit not to exceed fifty percent. Uh, that is in fifteen minutes or more. So I'm gonna make on the motion to accept the separate township fee schedule. Uh, that cost per copy be at five cents. And that the percentage of fee for good faith deposit. Does not exceed fifty percent, and then we'll be in fifteen minutes or more. But if I get support. So I would go with five cents per cap.
Yeah, I'll support it, and you can.
So and then in five cents for legal and letter size. And then the percentage fee for good faith deposit not to exceed fifty percent of the FOIA cost. Um, I, I think five of them were more than reasonable. Okay, and that would be in fifteen minutes or more, so that would be because our time at state, well, it's paid mentally, person works on the. Um, any other question on that? Andy, when you read that motion back?
To adopt. FOIA fee schedule. At five cents per copy legal and letter. In fifteen minute increments and no more than fifty percent good faith deposit.
Thank you, I had support, I think Jen contacted that correct? Okay, you want my server for roll call? Hopefully Eric comes back with.
Rachel?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Tim?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes. We can go forward.
Yeah, let's just move on.
Just put Eric as a.
Excellent.
Excellent, okay. Motion carried by zero, by zero dash one. Okay, um, so then we'll move on to FOIA coordinator, I will make a motion, um, for Andy. Um, to be the separate township FOIA coordinator. Um, being that she is certified now for the M P A. Um, to pay her per FOIA request. I would say an additional twenty five dollars.
Are you kidding me?
So then she can pay her friends to.
Twenty five dollars for a FOIA request?
I can tell you that I've been doing FOIA for the past four years when Ms. Moore was clerk, and I think I received four FOIA, four FOIA orders.
That just seems like a lot of money.
We can do, I mean, we can discuss that, I don't have support.
There's a lot of people in this township.
Work first, for, thank you, we can go into discussion, but what would be your recommendation?
I'm saying lower the price, a lot of people.
What would be your recommendation, who will work?
I wanna make it, Tim. I would like to make it like ten dollars for a paper, that's fine, people can afford it.
Are you in agreement with that? That's the per hour spent.
That's, that's.
I mean, just not hourly, we're giving her an additional ten dollars.
That's not the FOIA person that's paying that twenty five, that's.
Yeah.
A.
No, I'm not doing that.
It's supposed to be the lowest paid person.
Do you have any depression?
Um, yeah, I think the ten fifteen, you know, if you have to get involved, one, you know, because it could be, could be bad, could be good, but it also could be. Yeah, it could be bad or.
I'll see FOIA, so it could go both ways.
But it don't matter, you put them in, you'll get them anyway. So I'd probably go with fifteen, and we'll evaluate it in six months and see how many FOIAs we've had and see if it's a thing.
I agree, John.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to approve fifteen. Dollars per FOIA request. To review in six months.
And that's not including the board member, correct?
Well, I gotta get support on that for the store. Thank you, Chris, that's not one.
That is uh, not including the board members, you're not paying that money for FOIA.
No.
All right, just checking, I want to be clear on this.
No, what that is, is if you put out a FOIA request, then she gets fifteen dollars from payroll. For that FOIA request.
I got.
Then we can record with a roll call on that.
Rachel?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Chris?
Yeah. Motion carried sorry by one.
Okay, so before we leave that uh, discussion that, that. What there, I'd like to make. Motion that Tammy receives the training to be. Backup coordinator, if you will, because what if uh. Ambrosia's not here one day and Tammy's here and somebody needs to do a FOIA.
Tammy can take any initiative to, um. Do the M T A, like, she didn't receive special training, she got on the M T A website and took. I mean, Tammy's more than welcome to do that, and it's in her job description already. Tammy, I don't believe is assistant, and she just certified herself.
I can't get on M T A.
You're not, you don't have access to the M T A website. I think you can set up your own, I mean, I can help you if you want to.
That's not full time.
No, she's only part of, but she can, I haven't had, there's no access to it.
There's a lot of hours, so.
Okay, so moving on to the Artbug Senior Center remodel. Um. So add the minutes receipt for approval.
I, I'm blanking on why, I'm gonna just breeze right over that, I made a motion that Tammy be made.
I don't, we'll leave the discussion, yeah, did you? I don't, uh, well, we can go into discussion, yeah, did you support that?
I supported.
Okay, so, I, I'm just saying that the motion is irrelevant, because it's already in her job description. That's all I'm trying to say.
It was in her job description too, it still is, and you guys are putting her, and it's still Tammy's.
And then her job description to assist the clerk's department.
It's in my job description.
Correct, to assist the clerk's department with FOIA request.
Yeah, to do the FOIAs.
To the, the clerk's department, correct. That's all I'm saying, it's irrelevant to do a motion on something that's already in their job description, I mean, you can carry a motion.
Is she gonna be allowed to do that?
Well, if the clerk needs assistance, the clerk can ask for assistance.
The clerk's not doing FOIAs.
We have a motion for Andy, the deputy clerk, to do FOIAs.
She just said, if the clerk needs assistance doing FOIAs, then they'll ask Tammy, the clerk isn't in it, it's on her. It's not the clerk's job, it's her job, she's being paid to do it.
Well, if our deputy clerk needs assistance, she can ask Tammy.
So, just to be clear.
Honestly, we've had four FOIA requests in, in four, how many Nicole, how many, four, maybe four, maybe five, in four years?
I don't know.
I think we're making.
Wasn't your job to do them neither, so.
Well, I just wanna be clear that, oh, if Tammy needs help, Tammy can help.
Right, and it's in her job description.
All right, then I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, moving on, do you withdraw your support on it, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the Artful Senior Center remodel. Estimates received for approval, so, um, these are the estimates, these are the advertisements that went out. This is for, again, the Genesee County Artful Grant that we were approved for, um, that we are in a very strict time limit to have spent by October. Um, these are the remainder of the projects that they wanted to do. Um, they have been posted, obviously, in the paper, um, for two weeks at a time. This is what the senior center has received back, so there obviously is not quote for free on most of them. Because they cannot get free quotes back, we know it's anybody. We're not mandating that they have free quote, but we do need to show the attempt that we tried to bring in free quote and advertising through the papers. So I'm gonna make a motion to accept the Bossman Construction bid for the front vestibule for the senior center. Um, to be in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars from the, uh, Artful Senior Center, county. I support, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes. My question on the seniors center is, why are they doing a kitchen and bathroom, and they got a roof that needs to be done? I talked to John earlier about it, you think they do a roof before they do the kitchen?
So they had to have new projects all approved already by the county's grant, and that, this was back from the previous board. They said they had to have this whole project put up, that Marty, if Marty still was, I don't believe so. Marty attended those meetings too, so they already had to have like a pre-authorization due to county, had to lay their projects out at that time. So now they are in a position where they can't do any other projects, but for what they know.
The problem is, they're gonna need a roof. John made the thing, we'll just take it out of some fund and pay for the roof, they're getting a hundred thousand dollars. Take the money.
Looked at that.
Yeah, they're getting a hundred thousand dollars. John made a thing, you know, because they knew these roofs, the roofs could be before the kitchen, if you wanna do that, just take the roof off, and redo the kitchen, put drywall in, and let it rain inside, that'd be perfect. Let it rain, you got a roof over there, it's bad, but, you know, they won't put a brand-new kitchen.
And ironically, we were at that point eight months ago, having a discussion.
We were, we brought this up.
Okay, so we're past that, they can't change, I'm trying to explain to them.
The thing they can change, because you're bringing it back in for a vote.
No, they, uh, they can't change their plan, I mean, already told the county that they're spending, they signed that.
So the, the.
They have to get quotes on what they initially told.
That cares then, to not be responsible for that roof, because John said they'll take money out of here to give to them, that's wrong.
That's a choice, if we decide to do Artful funding, and we don't even know where their roofs at. We haven't, I mean, we need to have someone look at it, we need some patchwork up there, but we're not saying they need a whole new roof today. So I think that, I mean, yeah, I think that a new roof on there would be nice, if we have the additional funding, or the, or the grant that we receive.
They're, what, sixty-five, to do the kitchen, right? If I understanding, sixty-five thousand, sixty-four thousand.
So they've already been approved to receive this money, I think we're going down, we're, we're like having a, a long conversation. They've already been approved to have this money, but they have already given their ideals to the county, and been approved on what they can spend this money at. So now they cannot change what their ideals are to spend this money. So if they need a roof in the future, yeah, the township may need to consider, we put up a hundred and something thousand dollars in Artful funding that we receive from the state of Michigan, and we could look at doing that, if we wanted to in the future, but right now, that's not the conversation.
That counts, I question you, that counts, that counts upon it, Phil.
So let's move forward, and is there any more discussion regarding the quotes for the advertisement for the senior center vestibule remodel? Okay, if no discussion, can we please have a roll call on this, Andy?
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried by one. Okay, next we have the men's bathroom remodel. I make the motion to accept the Bossman Construction quote in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to remodel the men's bathroom. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, why are they putting the, the men bathroom over there, it's already handicapped.
Looks like they're doing some grab bars in there, there's.
There are already grab bars there.
They're doing a ADA, let's see, mineral, and there, I don't think, they may not do all of these construction things to it, depends on if they hit that hundred thousand dollar mark or not. Um, roll call, can we, like, no more discussion?
Eric?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion carried by one. Great, uh, that's, I'll make a motion to do the women's bathroom remodel in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Support with Boston Construction.
I'm trying to even look at this one.
Any discussion? Some discussion, please move forward with the roll call.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried by the one. Okay, when it came to the window, we did end up with two quotes, we have Pella window at, uh, five thousand forty-five dollars, had possibly come in at six thousand six hundred.
No, new window, let me place it.
This is just the one window in the front, I believe it's right there, the only front window.
Little tiny window, and that's five thousand dollars?
Uh, it looks like they haven't installed a window and an opening to be made, they need to cut a new opening along to accept the window, install a header. Need framing, install some five, five-four vinyl window. Uh, double hinge, configuration siding around the window, repair drywall, trim material around the window, need trim needed. You don't have the boss man room?
Well, I mean, I'm sure I do, I just can't find it in the.
I suggest we just do the boss main construction.
I just wanted to see which window he was, the, other companies use it in Pella's. So there's, so they're either, they're either putting them together, or it's a bigger window. It's just, it's a bigger window.
It's just a bigger window.
They're putting two windows together, Pella's putting two, this guy's putting one big one.
Ah.
So that's why, threw me out, because they're, they have two windows in the Pella. So, okay.
It is, it is only one window, but there's two of them together, come that way.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept. One window, I'm just gonna make a motion to accept the Bossman, uh, twelve and a half, six thousand six hundred and fifty. We need that for township, but there's never one though. For, sorry. Is there any word discussion on that? Joe's question. Pella was five thousand, six hundred and forty-five, so there's a thousand dollar difference between both of them.
And, and not to bring up, you know, Pella's one of the best windows on the market, yeah, just to let you know, it's one of the best.
So you, would you recommend with the, um, two windows coming together?
Yep, the windows could be, they come together, it's one window, I got it in my house. They're one window.
They just listed as two, and they, in the description, that's why, they're gonna screw them together, but it's two windows.
But they're charging, you're charging you for two instead of one, they put them together, they're charging you for two.
But it doesn't matter to me, I don't care which.
Well, you don't matter, I care, but these taxpayers care, I care, that's a lot of money.
I don't care which company we use.
Well, I don't care either what company, but I know Pella's expensive.
Is Bossman the one that's doing the cover?
No.
Well, I don't know, it doesn't tell what brand it is, I'm looking at the back of it, and they're saying, back of the.
I mean, are they willing to do the siding too, that's, I think the chairman's, yeah, repair the drywall. We can figure the sizing around the new window, which I know that that's special for mine.
And I make the motion to talk.
I got a motion on the table right now.
So, what I'm not understanding, I got a quote here, Bossman for sixty-six hundred and fifty dollars. And then when I, it's all the way to the back, I have, it says Pella window with a quote with no company.
Well, it is a Pella window, like, but there's both.
No, because that's fifty-six hundred and five.
So Bossman's gonna do it, but put a Pella window in, is that what you're saying?
That's what he's saying.
Is, they're saying, they're giving us a choice of which window to go with, Bossman's gonna do it. But do we want the Pella, or do we want the other one? That's what it looks like to me. It's at the very back.
That's the one you're talking about, paint and trim, so.
Very fun, yeah. If you look at this one on the front. They're giving you sixty-six hundred and fifty.
They're doing installing a seven-by-four vinyl window. Double, touch your standard double hung.
All right.
That's what John was saying.
And I think what they did, they're giving you a site. You pick.
All right. I understand, I believe I could, it's not, this is a whole stupid.
Listen, this Pella one, so who is the Pella company? No, this is just a window description. You know what?
This isn't just the window description, this is the work, but I can't validate.
Let me see, let me see your window, Bossman Construction's, they, the actual. Let me see, does he, he actually says he's installing. Yeah, he's gonna install seven-by-four vinyl winner, double hung. And this one is a, uh, it's a double hung also.
Window estimate.
This is from Cardinal, but Cardinal was doing that one. Cardinal, for Cardinal to do this window, Shannon did tell me that we had to make a decision, because they have to order it. To have.
This, this one here is from Cardinal.
Correct.
And that's from Bossman.
It doesn't say it on there, she.
Don't vote either one, it's just, just that you got this contractor on site already, uh, other than that, but even a thousand dollars more, so.
That's a lot of money, thousand dollars more for Pella window, okay, that's.
Can I, I'll just make a motion to withdraw my Bossman. Who supports that?
Did I do that, or you?
I think Kristen, okay, then I'll make a motion to approve Cardinal to do that Pella window estimate at five thousand six hundred and forty-five before.
Support.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, if no more discussion on that window, can we please move forward with the roll call?
Chris?
Yeah.
Tim?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Uh, motion carried by one. Okay, the next one is for the bid. Uh, I believe we might have a couple in here on the four week finishing.
For the seniors center too?
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, so they did give us like a couple. Can you look through that, it looks like we have one from Bossman at ten thousand four seventy-two. We have one from Finish at Custom Carpentry, from Jazz. It's like nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one. Another one from Floor Saming and Finishing for Hubert, eight thousand five hundred. Now, I also have another one for.
Okay.
Hands custom floors, John, I know I gave.
I'm, I'm sure you did, like I said, you're here, let me look at those four, if you don't mind. Three, so these guys got four of the same square footage.
This, this isn't a square footage.
Yeah, yeah, one guy has got low square footage.
What are they doing to it, John?
Uh.
They're gonna replace the wood that needs to be replaced?
They're saying they're agreeing to sand it, uh, they said they'll take out any other stains, and then two coats of, um, polyurethane, or, uh, oil-based polyurethane. And they're both pretty much consistent on that, two coats, oil-based polyurethane.
How much square footage?
Seventeen fifty.
And all four of them are coming out with that, or?
Yeah, they're real close, this one seventeen fifty-three, this is seventeen sixty, and this one is, uh, yeah, there's, there's, there's three at seventeen, and one guy with less. So, so the Rick Uber guy, doesn't, his square footage is low, compared to the young.
So the guy that's asking for Bossman, the most expensive one.
Ten-four, nine-five, and seven-oh-two, seven thousand twelve dollars. That's the lowest of those three.
And who is that?
Hands custom wood, hands custom wood, wood floors.
And he's got how much square footage?
He is the same, seventeen fifty-three, he's there.
That's the one, man.
He's there, so he, his says two coats of oil-based polyurethane. I'll sand out the dark spots and deep scratches. Oh, he said some deep scratches will not sand up, so he's given a disclaimer that I'm not gonna be able to go deep enough to get some of them. Um, and he's gonna do two coats of polyurethane, so he is definitely lower, if you like him, that's the one.
This guy, this guy's gonna sand for score times. What Pella's gonna do, that's gonna be in three coats.
Three coats, that guy.
And what one is that?
This one is finishing.
Initially custom. He says he claims three coats, and he's gonna sand between each coat, and he's got seventeen.
Yeah.
Yep, he's in the, right there, he's ninety-five. So he's, he's gonna do three coats, he sounds pretty thorough in his explanation, and he lists.
Listens everything out.
So. So, doesn't have to be right in the middle, it'd be right between the middle between, and he's, and he's detailed, area one, area two, he's, because there's the, both sides. So, from a detail standpoint. Yes, from a detail standpoint, he's really good, three coats, sand between, saying, that's what I'm doing.
Is any of that stuff you guys are mentioning come with a warranty? Did anybody find out? Is anything warranted? Just asking.
But I've had. That guy's the middle, though.
He's in the middle.
Right, but he is describing, he's looking at more work.
His detail is very, he's, his estimate's really detailed. That, this is what I'm gonna use. Well, and I have seen some horse, some bad ones, where they probably urethane them out. And, uh, they were not nice, they had, uh, dust and stuff in them, they were not good. So, sometimes, in this case, the lowest, we may not be about, so I like the middle of the rock guy.
No, that's, that's what I think, because he's putting a lot more work into it, three sandy, three coat.
Three sandy, three coat.
Motion, then we accept the bid of Finish It Custom Carpentry Finishes and Remodeling in the amount of ninety five fifty one thirty seven. Yeah, he's, he's very.
He's good, but not always correct.
I particularly like these kids.
There's no more discussion. Can we move forward with the roll call, please, Tim? Chris? Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
You.
Eric?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
The motion carried. Sorry. Thanks, Cleo. Um, and then Amy just further referenced, calling last. I'm usually the type figure. Um, we'll move forward to the, please, I'm sorry, folks in the floor in the background. So I got this quote that exceeds the thousand dollars.
Okay, Norman.
We got, no, we got a couple go here, yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Heavy assault there, awesome.
Okay, sorry. So if our township is ordering ordinance review and revise, I'm gonna make a motion. That um, that township. Uh, allows up to ten thousand dollars. Well, we'll start with, sorry, five thousand dollars in spending. Um, for our that were township zoning ordinance and review and revise recommendations by Wade Trim.
I'll support that. And, and I'll tell you why. Because, yeah, after talking to Caitlin, you know, about our master plan.
This is Wade Trim.
Or Wade Trim. This is Wade Trim.
Is that a company?
So Wade Trim's currently handling your master plan.
So they, so they're a company.
Yeah. Yeah, they're a plant. They handle planning and zoning and.
And the rep that's dealing with the master plan, all these changes, including like we just talked about, like gas station thing. You gotta update your ordinance. So she will go through everything and say, this is what you should do on all your. So it's a, it's a good plan. If you're gonna go with a new master plan, you need to update all that crap.
Okay.
That's for, that's why I, I can support that.
You said five thousand?
It's about to five. If we need additional, we'll bring it back for approval as we go.
Okay.
No more discussion. Can we move forward with the roll call?
Tim?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yeah. Motion carried by one. Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint uh a zoning ordinance subcommittee.
Second.
Thank you. Um, this was a recommendation by Wade Trim Caitlin, that we have a subcommittee. On the subcommittee, I actually, during our um workshop the other evening with the master plan, since they are correlating with the zoning. I'd like to appoint the same committee members. That would be Laura Shepherd. Um, Helen Lawrence, Michael Point.
Who's he back there? That's Michael Point.
Yeah, Michael Point, uh, John Condon, April Grigné. And am I missing anybody that currently sits on there?
Gary Gaines wasn't there.
Gary Gaines.
Ron Ripley.
And our, Ron Ripley. So it would be the same exact committee that has been working on the master plan, learning about this. I want that same committee to work with. Continue to work with Wade Trim through the zoning ordinance review.
So actually what you're doing is just giving them a. Zoning subcommittee instead of them being.
They are, they would be a subcommittee, so.
I'm saying that this is about just naming the committee, the sub, the zoning subcommittee, instead of them just coming together and working with them. Kind of making them official.
Yeah, they would be official.
I agree.
Is there any support on those residents and people? Thank you. Are there no objections to any of those that I have appointed to the subcommittee? Can we move forward with the roll call?
Eric?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion carried six zero. Maintenance part-time position. I don't have a motion on this yet. I do have six applications received. So if we do go with a special meeting this month. Please expect that. I've already started to set up interviews. Um, I'll probably be holding them on Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, so I just wanted to know that I'm moving forward with that part-time position that they had approved a while ago. Um, so we'll get some interviews and they'll be coming to the board. Um, now as we'll move forward.
Your question.
Uh. Oh, sorry, we're not in public comment. At the end, we're almost done with our agenda, and we can't accept public comment.
I got two. How many hours did it take?
So just.
Three hours for we claim us to.
We'll have to look back and see what we already approved. It was already posted in the paper. We already.
Benny was supposed to only be doing two days a week per Benny.
He's twenty hours a week. I think we approved different motion.
No, I was just saying, because he said he couldn't do more than that because of this disability.
So we'd have to look at the motion and see what we approved. Um, so we're gonna look at. Quote for flooring in the bathroom.
I don't, I am going to, let's not get too deep. Please, I have a question on that. Why are we getting a quote when Benny's gonna put the floor down?
Because I mean, the actual material. So we're just gonna go on the material. This is just the material.
So he's not, he's not.
Fine, can I make a motion, please? I'm gonna make a motion to accept the quote of one thousand forty eight dollars and ninety percent for the materials from Thompson Flooring.
Thompson Flooring, what?
One thousand forty eight dollars and ninety percent.
Yeah.
Forty eight.
It's. That's a Thompson, just so that they don't put that out.
Thousand seven. Corey.
Did you get support for that?
Laura's home there.
I'll support.
Thank you.
If you, uh, where you getting the money from would be my only question.
Um, I think that budget would be, but uh, it was just certain. I do have allocated fifteen thousand dollars for additions and improvements to building. I believe it's around ten or fifteen thousand.
Do you think you got fifteen in there and we're just using a thousand?
We just rolled our fiscal year, so our budget just started.
The garage area.
So you know the old police station one? So that whole back room. Uh, Benny has repainted, that whole hallway area in there has been repainted, and then you can see the entryway between the garage and the kitchen. That's the replacement. So this flooring, all this material, is that entire area.
What are we doing with this?
The remedy carpet.
What are we doing with this room?
As of now, it's been storage for all of the records. Um, it's an option. I don't know for sure. Maybe we'll turn it into the election room. Maybe we'll look at.
We got.
If we haven't got tracks, we'll.
Either way, it's gonna be good. He's took all that commercial tile off and it's, so now it'll be all vinyl plank. It'll, it'll be nice, don't matter what you put in there.
Can I, uh. Probably shouldn't say it, but. Um. Uh, we'll talk about it.
I'm moving forward with a roll call on the quote for the flooring.
I'm gonna see if you could get enough through this.
Yeah, we can bring one back. You can bring it back up. I was giving some praise in this tour.
I agree with that carpeter.
Anyways, let's do the roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Get ahead of it.
Um.
Yes.
Got your back, John.
Yeah, yeah.
Eric?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Rachel?
Yes. Approved by one. Hey, now we'll move on to the police department. Uh, if you wanna move forward with that.
Okay, I want to. So we can discuss it, I am going to make a. Um. Motion. That we.
Validate.
We just. We know the police department plan.
You can have a discussion without having to make a motion.
Right.
You don't have, yeah, you don't have to make a motion.
So. As everybody knows, um. The Clive Police Chief has been. Uh, conversed with. And he is willing to come up and give us a. Presentation and a quote. We just have to give him what we're expecting or what we're looking for. Um, we have talked to many, many residents, and they are all on board with bringing our police department back. They just don't wanna repeat what we had. Of. You know. Let's just do it ahead of hell with blocks. You gotta gun a badge. So. We would like to. Have the chief come out and talk with us and give us a plan and possible. Well, and what is it cost to have the Clive Police Department help us out by? Uh. Controlling our area, doing stuff like that. Because we have run into several state police officers, like, hey, we got this going on. I'm like, we don't care. We don't wanna do nothing about it. They won't come out here. Sheriff's Department's like, you don't pay us. We ain't coming out there. You know, and I talked to two. Sorry, Pat. Yeah, go ahead. I talked to. The chief down in Genesee County. He said he wants no part of it. He said he talked to you and you, you told him, quote, I don't want to put you out here. That's what he said. Whoa. He said he didn't, he didn't want the sheriff out here. He said that's what you.
Very expensive.
Well, so I talked to Genesee. They pay him at the BN Township, they pay a million and a half dollars. That's expensive.
Yes.
But Clive, I went there personally and talked to the chief, and you, of course, said, you're gonna get invited ordinance because, are mad at you because they don't want police. Remember, you said that to me. Yes, you did.
There's a discussion, but.
Here's the police. I talked to the chief. He said if he can get a quote. And, and you present it for what you want out of this police department, he will come into that podium and he'll sit down and figure it out, and he will tell you what he will do for this much money. And he says, and the thing is, they got their own cars, they got their own vest, they got everything. We don't need a court enforcer. I'm sorry, but we don't need him. We need the police.
You have any discussion over here?
And what do we need police for?
Did you see how many people died when that police was here? Because he knows how to do CPR. He could have probably saved that woman's life.
Most police officers are not trained in CPR.
I only went one today.
Um, there's, there's.
Yeah, I'll try to hear. Eric, just make your statement, but I don't.
It's a train between the paramedic and police officer.
The only people.
The rebuttal.
Guys.
Tim, you had your stand for what? Everybody say their reason.
I think, uh, I think that we need to pursue the uh, the EMT services. I think that's the, the priority goal and the primary thing that would facilitate this township the best. Uh, it's not about, uh, we just don't have the. The type of crime that. Uh, it may as a police department, and, but we do have the, uh, we do have a, uh, a. Uh, an aging uh, community that definitely needs uh, transfers and emergency medical response. So I think that is, in my opinion, is where we should go. Uh, because the emergency medical technicians are gonna serve this community a lot better in that regard, because it's about, it's about medical, it's about health.
Those are the police.
Okay.
I just, uh, I would be interested to see what that amount is, because um. It's, it's one thing to have a quote, but I can tell you, in my, just my personal opinion, that's gonna require three mils. And, and so you're gonna have to get the taxpayer out there to vote for three mils on their taxes.
They already went to tax, it was hell, that was door to door. Maybe they will, but.
It's my turn.
It was one person.
It's still my turn. I think it's gonna, that's it. The minimum is gonna require three mils. So, when you talk, when you're asking them, you have to also ask everybody, are you willing to have your three mil increase on your tax? So, I'm, that's all I'm saying about it. So, but I would be interested to find what's that, what it costs.
Definitely, I'd say, I like to have him up here when.
Turn on the light.
You already did.
Thank you. You did.
Right, that's it.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having a police department out here too, but you gotta remember, it takes more than one police officer. You don't want to have somebody in the morning, somebody in the evening, somebody in the afternoon.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
Somebody around the clock.
It'll be one cop.
Yeah. So.
It's start some.
She gotta see how much, done cops, I guess. I'm not, I'm not.
No, I'm just gonna see what, see if, if the taxpayer's willing to pay for it. It's the service they wanna pay for, then, oh, I'm sorry, that's not my turn.
No, I, I mean, I was just gonna say my turn. Uh, no, I would, um, and, and there's other options too, not just the City of Clive. I will say the Nantown Township can also help us out. They have a plan. They've been trying to get us on their police and that cost unit. Um, there was also Genesee Township, I believe, built heart, was trying to serve the northern tier. Area at one time. Uh, we did have one of our residents who worked for the county park, retired police officer that created an entirety plan. Um, for a police department. Uh, what I will guarantee is that we can't sustain even a part-time police department financial. Our township is just now getting into a decent financial position. Um, and remember, the special assessment was at seventy five dollars that was withdrawn off the table. Uh, I do wanna reiterate, the special assessment brought on a lot of heat from township ordinance. I would agree with John's. I think it is going to be tough. To get a millage passed by this township. Um, moving forward, if the people want it, I believe the best way to do is take it to a vote, try to get the convention on there, and get a public safety millage, then move forward with your plan.
Well.
Can I, can I say one more thing? We do have. Go ahead. We do have, um, a state trooper that's been coming in once a week.
Well, we know.
Yeah, he comes in once a week. He uses the restroom, takes a break. He, um, he serves.
Two. Cause we have the lazy that comes in.
That's right, we have to.
She's at the township.
Right, so they come in and they use the bathroom, they take a break. They, um, service Forest Township, that for Township, and I believe Gaines Township. So I know that Gaines is quite a ways over. But, so they've been coming in, and he's been coming in, what, twice a week, and then she comes in almost fifteen nights a week. Yeah, she was here today. So I mean, they're still out and about as well, just to give you.
But what's they gonna do?
Bringing them out.
That's the question.
They all do the same.
Really don't. So. What I would like to do, whole point of this is. Have the Iowa Police Chief come in, have Genesee Police Chief come in, have Deputy Dog come in, I don't care. But have somebody come in and give us quotes. So that we can take it to the people, because there's been a lot of people that have requested a police department back out there. That's the whole, that, that's the whole point of this. Discussion is to, can we get the quotes and get uh, people to come in, and when we have it to present, we present it to the people. If they want it, great. If they don't want it, you know what?
Let them decide.
Information for people.
You know, but we can give them the information. I'd like to do that as a special meeting, and I'd like. That to do something if we can line up City of Clive or talk to the Nantown Township, anybody else who wants to, even the Genesee County.
Would that be a public?
We can, I mean, my, my honest recommendation would be to establish a committee, let the committee come up with the ideal and do a recommendation. That will be where I went. I believe previously there was a public safety committee that was enacted uh, back when I think crew was here. That's how they initiated and started. Um, rather than putting, you know, five people in a room quoting against each other on how they can give you services better.
Yeah.
Um, but I would definitely start with a committee, and then the committee is the one who gathers those and then presents to most affected.
But I, I'd like to see the, you know. You know, get a, uh. I'd like to see the committee get a, uh, work, an idea for a millage pass. I mean, I, I, I just, no, I mean, we did do this before, uh, I've experienced this all before. I mean, had several.
Up marijuana, so. I don't want money to help pay for it.
Yeah, but I don't see that has to do with the, the marijuana, uh, facilities, but they, uh. The, the, the point is that the, we went through this process before. And having a bunch of people come in here and tell us what they would do it for when. The majority of the community has no intention of buying what they're selling, I think is a waste of time, it's a waste of their time too. Um, so I, I'd like to see a committee put together a, a, a millage and, and I'd like to see that millage get voted on. And if the township's going to vote for a millage increase, I'd be more than happy to give the grease, but I'm not gonna give. I'm gonna give the, the township the grease when I already know the majority of people are gonna vote it down. So, this is where I'm at.
I would agree with you, Eric, on that one. I'd rather forget the townships willing to pass a millage before we start digging into the details.
Absolutely.
And so how would we do that if we don't know what amount? We need, we need to.
That's why you're gonna get a committee.
Right. I think that's gonna, get a committee together, have, contact these people, put something in writing, because I don't want them to come up to a pedestal and just tell me that. You gotta write it down. I'm gonna give you a, a patrol from this time to this time, for this much money, what's it gonna cost?
And I would like this to be, if we can make it to the governor. Election instead. Election instead.
Right.
I think when you do the smaller elections, it's kind of a.
Yeah, no, I.
It's gonna take a while for it to get some quote.
That's the, that's the same one.
Sure, yeah, that gets us a year and a half. Put together, you know, put it in, advertise it, however people want to, we can put it on ballot. Um, I guess.
Once we, once we know the ballpark where we need to.
I got a question. Why can't we get, although from everybody, said Genesee County, I don't whatever, bring them in. But we gotta sit down and draw something that we want around the police. And then he said he will draw his and bring it into that podium, and he said he would consent it.
Well, no, I mean, I'm not seeing a problem with that, but right now we gotta get the funding, right? So we wanna take a mil to the people, let them vote, that we wanna know for public safety, or two mil, or three mil, whatever the cost of it. So then we're like, okay, the people do want it, they agrees with two mil, now we have this much money to establish a police department for them.
Next question, the marijuana is five thousand dollars, where's that money go if they can't go to the police departments?
I can't go to. But it's not wanting to cover.
I can't see the little village of Clive being three million dollars, I just don't see it.
No, I think a mil is a, is a term, is a term used to, it's a. Yeah.
So if we could do that, get this up here, we get a police department in here, cause we need one.
And that's funny, when you advocate Laura, you can advocate, I mean. But well, again, I don't have a problem with a committee being put in place to start researching that. And we're gonna see what we would need to maintain a police department.
John gonna handle that committee?
It's your guys.
Okay, we'll do that, I'm good with it.
So you guys are handling a committee to, do you know what you're doing?
Yeah, safety.
Creating, you're creating a a a mil to put on the ballot.
I would recommend to add, well, I wouldn't say having Lawrence, if he's willing, he has a lot of history from. Where we get the numbers at and figures. I don't wanna show your justification to the board on how you're getting to this two mil you're requesting on the ballot, it's getting to this three mil. That's what I'm trying to implement there.
Ellen, you wanna join us?
I can dig up all the old records that I got.
You wanna join us?
Changed since then.
Yes.
Lots changed.
Yeah.
Same procedure we used then, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, and, I'm sorry.
No.
Do it, I along with that, see, you know, we're currently taken out of our general fund. And we're, we're, we're having to help the fire authority. So a public millage, um. Public service millage, maybe you're gonna have to incorporate that, and once you get that, that is gonna incorporate part of that too, so keep that in mind. When you're researching, cause we already are paying in partially out of the general fund. And what that, whatever you come, unless it's dedicated for police, oh, if the millage was the worded. Hold this one's for police, this one's for fire, and you can do it that way, but if you call it public. We call it public service. See, then it switches fault. Just keep that in mind.
Right, um, with that discussion being over, we will move on to public comment.
Uh, there's a lot of people in the township that I've talked to that would really like to bring a dumpster back to the township for tires. I don't know if it's still in the garbage container or not. Uh, we did it for a few years and I haven't been done in like six years. And the mosquito vent tires are definitely a public safety hazard. And the federal department market, I don't know if anyone's checked into the uh, insurance with burn the flowers. Because they would need to be notified, because it's just like any other special event, like a Halloween party or anything like that. You still had to have insurance.
I I think it covers her, I think it covers her Halloween party.
Yeah, but you still have to let them know that you're doing. You can't just do things and.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the less oil equipment, uh, it's not even all here at the township. You need to have more of a back.
I'm not gonna go down that avenue, but I will say about that avenue, there's a lot of stuff out there from my understanding, like how we did their investigation. I don't think that any of us are gonna trespass on somebody's property.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that. You just need to do your job and just figure out where it's at, answer people, someone will bring it right back and give it to you, cause they don't want it on their property anymore. Just like the school did, Clive School brought it back, dropped it in your lap. Anyway, so you're gonna have auction without even all the stuff. And then as far as uh, someone getting uh, a renewal. A year or this, says, they need to pay the five thousand whether they're approved or not.
Would recommend reading it, or.
Well, I recommend if you changed it from that, you messed it up.
I would recommend reading it on the order.
Yeah. I I don't agree that much, and you need to start doing things where the people vote on things. Like selling this school for pennies. You know, there's a lot of people in this school, in this township, that don't even know what happened with that school. You know, and for you to allow one of your friends and then you rezone it.
Clive area schools sold the school here, not that first town.
I know that, but that for township had the opportunity to have that to expand the senior center, do all kinds of other things. But because of someone else's idea, oh, no, that's no good, we can't do that. And that, you just gotta look out for the people that live here, not just your own personal things, that's what's going on.
You need to vote for that, I stand by it today.
Yeah, I know you do. And it's a fruitcake idea. And another thing is. When you don't change your address behind your driver's license, it's breaking the law. So I suggest you change your driver.
Okay. I just moved.
Yeah, just moved.
Thank you for stopping me and I'm glad you know where I live.
I don't know where you live, and I'd never stalk you, you're not even close.
Okay, well, move on to any other public comment.
Okay. Uh, first off, the floor in the bathroom is getting done before the entryway, it's been messed up for four years now. How come the entryway's not being done where the public come in at? Um. The police department, you gotta sit up here and tell, over, 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 marijuana brings in this, marijuana brings in that. Brings in this much money, almost four hundred thousand dollars. Yay. Can't I go towards the police? Why not? Is it important? Yes, it is important. Why? Because the township then would have their ordinance is enforced. That's why it's important, not just for all of the other things that they would do. Uh, again. You guys voted on ordinance, you don't even follow. Why do you even vote on it? Why? Why do you have ordinance? Cause you don't follow. There's supposed to be the structure of our township. Again, silence, that's okay. You don't follow it, over and over, that's why we need the police. We need the police because we have marijuana. When we had the police before. And we crammed it down everybody's throat, we didn't have marijuana here. Now it's here. We've had a murder over it, we've had stabbing over it, we've had numerous accidents over it. That is why we need it here. And I do believe the people did speak. At least through the survey, two hundred and seventy-one of them, majority of them want police. The uh, LESO program stuff, there are more people out there than at Albright. There, the last time we looked at that, we looked at that code before. You get nothing. They're gonna screw you over, you're gonna be paying Albright. To get regular stuff, and you'll get no return on it. Not. Because you'll pay their people, you'll pay for their, their uh, use of, they'll bring in their own court bodies, and you'll pay for that. You don't get to bring in your own court bodies, sorry. Uh, again. Friends, 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 yes, 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 and yes. Keep going, friends, plenty more seconds.
Well, you go on.
Certainly have our public comment.
Oh, about our police, it is so important that we have, I live in Lake Worth. My neighbor, they have cows. They're gonna have to start locking the gates, because someone is going back there and opening the gates. I have a neighbor. At night, thought he heard something, he opens the door and there's this guy right there in the back porch. And he said, what do you want? What are you, what what's going on? The guy took off running. We need the police department here. Thank you.
So I'm just saying about the police thing, you guys are sitting up here and you're like, oh, we gotta, we gotta figure out, we gotta do a mil, we gotta do this, we gotta do that. They supported the police department with, I believe, two full-time officers and a part-time officer prior, prior to the marijuana. You could use the extra funding for that, you can use the money you get from the LSO from that. You can do whatever, and you're talking about, well, it's gonna be one, two, three million people, you're coming up with excuses. But yet you'll sit up here and pass for them all to be here to get their funding. So put their funding to use, protect the residents, that's what the board's supposed to do, right? You're supposed to work for the residents. You're supposed to protect the residents, you have people coming forward to tell you that people have come to their homes. They've had people in their yards, people are stealing stuff, you read it all over Facebook, they're going and taking people's stuff, taking it for scrap. Maybe that's petty to some people, but maybe to some people, that's all they can afford to put in this yard, and we're justifying it. But you can sit up here and just be like, yes, 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 let's get it done for other things. But when people are coming to actually tell you what they think and how they feel about what's going on. So what, maybe it was denied years ago, things have changed. Remember, this is the wave of the future, let's deal with it, and if you don't deal with it, then we tell people, you don't like it, move. If you don't like the job you're doing because you have to smell stuff all day, well, just quit your job. It's okay, just quit your job. Really? Why don't you guys want quicker jobs? Why don't you just sit down? Let some people in here that care about what's going on here, cause obviously, some of you don't. Unbelievable. You say whatever you want about me, because obviously I'm living in all your brains rent-free. And you're blaming everything on me, here I am. You wanna fire back? Fire back. Yeah, give me your eyes. That's what, that's what, you are statistic.
I'd like to say something about the police department, so.
Yeah, it's public comments, it's not boarding.
Will you ask for comments?
I didn't ask for no comment.
But you're telling. Any more about what happened? So what I was going to say, so back when we had a police department here in Pepper Township. My house got rolled into, when I called the Pepper Police Department, they never showed up. In the Saddle State Police. So I'm just saying, whether we have a police department or not, they're not always gonna come. And if they do, it could be forty-five minutes, half hour. So I mean, I just wanna make that clear. Cause that happened to me in real life, um. And I'm, I'm not a hoax, hey, I have a police department here. I agree with Eric. I'd rather have an ambulance out here where they're trained. Somebody's having a heart attack, I'd rather have an ambulance as, as a police, a policeman. Cause I do know some policemen that don't know CPR. So, that's. You can say they don't care about the community, I don't wanna do, and I'd rather have an ambulance out here.
So if somebody comes to your house first and shoot somebody, you'd rather have the ambulance there. Stand up, please, to see if there's still a perpetrator there.
I'd rather have the ambulance there to say it's not a double for being shot. I, I, I want somebody that can take. And I'm hoping there's somebody else there.
Why can't you find funding to do it all?
Not really related to, you got just, did we, um. Then I did contact three contractors about the kitchen, and hopefully we will have them. Soon, and if we do, it'd be a good thing to add on your special meeting. If we have one. They were supposed to be here by the third, and they're, you know, and none of them are here, except for one says it's on the way.
I got a question.
Tim, go ahead with your.
So please, the police department, you know, somebody goes in your house and gets shot. So you're gonna call the fire department to come out, and they're gonna sit there and walk in your house where somebody got shot. So the police, they're, they're not going in that house, when the police there, the cops show up, they go in, the uh, fire department does not. And you're gonna need them, cause there's somebody breaking and stuff around, people's stuff getting stolen. It is, it's the truth. But you people up here don't want it. Chrissy said she does. You don't want it. You made that very clear to me.
Do you have any, uh, comments, tech tech?
I believe that we need the police because we are getting a lot of complaints about, um. Marijuana. Uh, the marijuana places, a lot of them, they're, they don't even care what the ordinance says, they're just gonna do what they want. Um. I I have heard from several people over in the Great Triangle that uh. You can't even walk outside sometimes, it smells so bad. Well, you know, in the ordinance. Does say smells a violation. We have ordinance ninety-eight, which gives you a uh. Uh, the consequences for those violations. So how many fines have we collected from any of these places? I can tell you, because ordinance ninety-eight says you first fix the hundred dollars, your second one's two fifty. Your third one is five hundred dollars, and it's per day. So day one, they get a hundred dollars, they don't fix it, day two, they get two fifty, day three, it's five hundred dollars. A day. They go ten days, that's five thousand dollars that they owe us. They don't wanna fix it, they don't wanna change your filters, they don't wanna do whatever it is they wanna do or they have to do to fix it. Uh, they become a nuisance, and we have to shut them down. Who are we gonna send to shut them down?
Or department.
You know, Greg is our uh, our code enforcer, he's not gonna go over there and risk getting himself in a lot of trouble, shut him down. If we had to shut one down, um, no, please, we need the police. And I really hate to have to say it because, my God, I am. The last police department we had here with uh, King Bob. Was that, it really, really wasn't, I mean, they got turned into a uh. Basically a Gestapo, and Eric can attest to that one, because he wouldn't do what he was uh. Supposed to do, and they sent the band pops over there to really harass the hell out of him. And that was wrong, they never should have. He wasn't doing anything wrong. He was working on his house, they wanted to make a big deal about that. We don't need that, we need a police department that is going to serve and protect, not oppress and enslave. Um, so, you know. There's a lot of people that feel the same way, that we need police out here. And just in case anybody knows, I don't call nine one one, I call eight one one. Cause he's breaking into my house. Ain't nobody gonna know you're there. Um. Thanks for coming.
I got one other thing.
What is it, Eric's turn, Eric?
Didn't uh, didn't mention.
Okay, I only got one thing to say. You know, Chief Kenny was the chief here in this, he was so-called chief. You know, my son, I live in Belzerone, everybody knows that. My son's out riding his four-wheeler. Chief Kenny let this neighbor shoot a twenty-two mag across and almost hit my son. Chief Kenny didn't. I went to that house. I went to talk to Chief Kenny, and Chief Kenny said, well, I said he could do it. If you say he's gonna do it, I'm gonna own this township. I'm gonna tell you that right now, my, when my son gets hit with bullet, I'm gonna own this township, I'm gonna own everything he's got. So anyway, state county, state told Chief Kenny, overrode him, said, you are not shooting that gun here no more, and he hasn't. My, it's my thing, it's my son. You mess with my family, you got a bigger problem.
Eric, do you have any?
When I uh. I first got here in two thousand twelve, I think the police department was a topic of big discussion. Uh, most residents had told me that they didn't mind having the police department, they just didn't want it getting any bigger. And since I arrived in two thousand twelve at the, uh, this position, uh, the police department did. Get nothing but bigger, uh, in that time that I was here. And I knew it wasn't what the residents wanted, and I also knew that. And I knew wasn't what the residents wanted and I also knew that prior to me being here, there was a vote. Um to uh uh increase the millage of the township for public safety, mainly for the police. And that was voted down by a two-thirds majority of the, of the voting public. So when, when I, regardless of uh this being two thousand twenty-five, uh more than a decade later. Uh I don't think a lot's changed since then. And since then, the township has been um, has been uh. Stated or run record or whatever of being the fourth safest community in the whole state of Michigan. I think that that still bodes well with us here. I don't think there's a lot of uh, a huge uptick in crime. Although the type of crime that we do see uh occurring. Has more to do with economics than anything else and you'll notice. That even when the slightest uh uptick in unemployment occurs, you get something like a six point seven percent increase in uh. You know, that violent crime, break-ins and so forth. So when that, what I would argue that um we need to focus more on the socioeconomic system and improving that. Uh before getting more police. I also think that we need to do a better job of uh, of getting rid, getting rid of older laws. I think we don't do enough, a good enough job right here uh in. In every aspect or in every level of government. Uh we uh, we. Uh you know, when, there's a code, a lot of things have been touched on here, so we could try to like, maybe uh touch on a few of them. When it comes to the smell of marijuana, uh I've noticed that there's quite a trend. That the people that complain about it uh just are people that complain about it simply because they don't like it. They just don't like it and they don't like anything about it. They don't like the people that use it. What it really comes down to is it's, it's just a matter of just not liking. Uh the, about five weeks ago, the Michigan State Supreme Court uh made a ruling of seven to zero. That the smell of marijuana did not constitute probable cause. So even if we did get a police department. There's never gonna be a situation where the smell of marijuana is the reason that the police are called, or even if it is the reason the police are called. Police are either gonna ignore it or whatever. Uh because it's no longer a probable cause and they can't do anything with it. Uh. Furthermore, I would, I would, you know, I would also, you know, look to point to this administration. Uh the Trump administration has already uh put a DA agent uh in charge of the um. Drug policy of this country and it's been stated multiple times that marijuana is on the docket for rescheduling. So we're likely to see the Trump administration um and the scheduling of marijuana in schedule one near five. With it, uh furthermore, um I just don't see the, the increased need for police, although I'm willing to be open-minded about that. The residents wanna uh put for the millage, they wanna pay for it, I'm, I'm all about it. Uh I do um agree uh a lot with uh the comments made by Chris Taylor. The, when law enforcement is called to a scene, it's usually. You know, post whatever crimes just taking place, whether that be a break-in, uh shooting home defense or otherwise. And it's usually the police that just uh simply conduct the investigation and they determine what happened after the fact. Um you know, having more police does not automatically correlate well with during crime. Uh so, uh and in fact, if you, if other statistics, it actually is the other way. More police just means. More people go to jail. Um and a lot of this is, is victims of crime. So with that said, I uh would like to entertain um just, just my ideas on that, if I'd be willing to, you know, I'm gonna keep it open mind. But as of right now, that's just my current uh train of thought and I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Eric, and um. I like your views on that because I would have to agree with you a hundred percent. I am as well, open-minded with the police department, but um. My history with that for township, I would say the same. I think that since I've been elected as trustee, the uh police department has been a high source. We're still sitting on the last hour, it's left a bad taste in a lot of residents' mouths, but on the same sense. I am definitely open-minded, but I would rather just go to a vote of the people and let the people decide. I will one hundred percent state right now, I will disagree with a special assessment being brought onto the people. That's something that we were able to get rid of. Um at that time, even us getting rid of it, I had asked for the board to consider cutting that in half. The board still moved forward with getting rid of that special assessment. I will not entertain a special assessment. Uh again, I would like to see that on the governor ballot. If this board decides to move forward with asking the residents for an increase in millage. That will be the only way that we're able to fund a police department. I do believe that it's not going to cure everything. Uh but we did have a police department, you know, why the police. Why is the police car up at McDonald's? Well, I mean, just a reminder, we have nowhere for them to eat in Pepper Township. Um there was a lot of, well, they're not here, I called them. Well, they might be on another call, maybe they called in that day. There was a lot of complaints even when we did have a defer. So I will say I don't see it sufficing the needs of everybody in the township. But I am supportive of it. If the people want it, let's move forward, let's get, you know, the information, the details that we need. But that needs to be left up to the people, not up to the board to force onto the people. It's just been a delicate subject in our township for many years. Um. But that means that I really don't have too much more. I think we have a, a board meeting this evening and I do appreciate everyone showing up. And um stating my views, make a motion to adjourn. All favors, they are.
Yes.